All county offices will be closed on Monday, December the 25th, through Tuesday, December the 26th, in observance of the Christmas holiday. All offices will reopen on Wednesday, December the 27th. All county offices will be closed Monday, January 1st, and Tuesday, January 2nd, in observance of the New Year's holiday. All offices will reopen on Wednesday, January 3rd.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner, located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the Northeast, West Side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number 2, coastrx.com. Happy savings.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Yes, sir, I did. I'll be filling in.
We're good, Judge.
Good morning. Today is Monday, December 21st, 2017. Commissioners Court is meeting in special open session. Item number two from the regular agenda: approve and authorize the county judge to sign the inter-local cooperation agreement with the Texas Department of Public Safety, El Paso Crime Lab, for one full-time equivalent to perform blood alcohol analysis in an amount not to exceed $159,671.77 for a two-year term. Contract number 2017-0844.
Good morning, Judge John Chundel.
Good morning.
Would you like to go ahead and... I don't know, we spoke about this item on Monday, and I think there were a few questions that the court had in terms of working with DPS on maybe looking at a one-year contract and... So I'm not sure what the result of those conversations were.
Discussion with the... Where we left off was the following. There were some question because it was a budget item. The urgency, I think we've given enough information to you, Judge, and the commissioners on the urgency of the matter, on these backlog of these cases. And the benefit, of course, would be having a chemist. The resolution would be having a chemist. But in our discussion with DPS, they were committed to a two-year commitment to helping El Paso County start turning around these cases. And they feel that that would be it because here's the deal. They would have to get somebody here as quickly as possible, train somebody, and then get somebody immediately in place. That would be probably in the next six months. Six months later, the contract would be over. So the commitment would be for a longer period to justify the existence of having somebody exclusively to assist us in addressing these backlog cases because they're just stale. And then the other question came up whether the judges probably could engage in some budgetary deal. The only thing I can tell you, Judge and Commissioner, would be the following. See, since we're gatekeepers and we then have to decide whether evidence comes in or not, the appearance of some impropriety would be there. So it wouldn't follow through that I would be the one paying the chemist, and then I want to be ruling on whether that comes in or not. So I think that would probably be a violation of our canons. So I just wanted to relay that. I did discuss that with some of the members of the court. So I think the matter at hand would be, as Mr. Sparson said last time, the win-win situation here would be just to allow us to continue with this MOU. And you, Judge, having the benefit of the commissioners of allowing that chemist to come here and immediately start addressing some of these issues. As we stated earlier, I think DPS is doing the best they can. They really are. They understand the situation. It's this that... That's the amount of case load that is out there. And law enforcement is really busy right now. In fact, in this time period, they're going to be even more busy. So I'm hoping that we have provided what I think would be the information you all need to adequately justify addressing this issue and helping us to start getting on these cases. I mean, I'm certainly open to any of it. Mr. Sparson, of course, is here.
Do you want to mention him? And Judge Sekul, thank you for joining us as well.
Judge, you're in here.
Feel free to come up if you'd like to.
I think it is a pressing issue like we discussed at the Commissioners Court meeting. You know, the question was asked whether or not we could use our discretionary funds. We budgeted those. But that's really not a fund that's really available to us, especially at the expense that this would require. I do think that the backlog makes... Is not preferred. Now we wait about anywhere from six to nine months to get results. But I will tell you that just after the meeting, maybe coincidence, maybe as a result of the meeting, but DPS called us and they had an Abilene who... They had a chemist in Abilene who had... Who is now free to do some other things. And so we're sending over blood at 30 cases a week. So we're hoping that will continue. I do think they have resource issues just like we have resource issues. And so, I mean, I would love to settle this. I don't think... I certainly wouldn't want to send a message to the community that somehow that lessens how aggressive we'll be on DWIs or that community safety is in peril. That's not true. All that's happening here is the arrest is occurring and we cannot file the case until we get the blood results. And so that wait is from six to nine months. So we have the pending case. It's not in the court system yet, but we have it. And we won't put it in the system until we get the blood results. Because it could be that the blood results show that there was no alcohol in the system, or we want to know precisely how much alcohol was in the system. And so, you know, we'll continue to do that. I understand funding's an issue, but I'm encouraged that DPS has found other resources. And frankly, I think that we should allow DPS to see if they have other resources, to see where we are, you know, in the near future. Be happy to answer any questions.
And I do think that, from what I gathered in our conversation on Monday, the nine-month backlog is not something that the court is comfortable with at all. I do think that part of the concern was having such a large funding request, not having come through the budget cycle, which you all understand. It is promising to hear that after Monday's discussion that DPS was able to find another employee in another part of Texas that is now able to take up to 120 cases a month, which hopefully in time, that could maybe reduce the backlog that we're seeing. Probably not significantly, but that is yet to be determined. And who's to say that DPS might not be able to find another resource across the state if they're not experiencing as high of volumes as we are, perhaps? I don't know.
Which is why, Judge, I think we wanted to come to the court and say, listen, why don't we work on this for at least a two-year period? Get ourselves at least in line with what we need to be doing. Certainly, things can be continuing, and we're very happy to hear those news. I think everybody understands the urgency. I think everybody's coming to the table and coming to the plate and offering something. I was discussing Wally the other day. You know, we still have to address those cases that are in jail. And so when you have anybody in jail for 30 to 60 days at $100 a pop and we're just waiting, it's costing the county. It's costing us because we're just having a case sit. So in every aspect, Judge and Commissioners, we're just kind of advising the court. This is, I think, a commitment. Let's work on what we have. DPS is doing what they have to. The law enforcement, the state, and the judges at Defense Department, they're all waiting just to just start moving these cases along. And I think after probably a two-year period, we'll probably have a better resolution. But you know, I don't know what the legislature's going to do. We never know how that is.
And we'll definitely put this on our legislative agenda. That, I think, is something we need to do.
But I think it's a very comparable amount. I think it's a reasonable amount, and I think they came through very reasonably. And they're willing to just come in and start really addressing this issue and getting a person on board, training that person. And then we'll have a full-time person, and hopefully we have somebody here locally. And so we don't... So we can beat that turnaround because DPS has it. That's the other thing. Yeah, we don't have to be flying in folks, but we'll have somebody here locally. Here's the other thing. You know, when we tell these stateless, "We're going to need your expert here." They have to fly them in from Abilene, Lubbock, Austin, wherever they may be at. That keeps them away from the lab. That's the other thing. They're here. We, of course, try to accommodate these experts. You know, to be here maybe that week, we're all going to be there. It's difficult to do that. But when you have that person here locally, alleviates a lot of those problems. So there's a lot of benefit. There's a lot of win-win for everybody, especially to address this case. So I'm hoping that the court sees fit to probably address this right now. Certainly, it's going to be an onboard situation.
I hate doing things on Thursdays, but we talked about doing this today, so it's not something I want to fight. I've talked to the Public Defender's Office. I've talked to the District Attorney's Office. I've talked to 24-hour magistrate judge. I've talked to the judges. It's very rare all those people say the same thing. They all say this makes sense. If we can get this done faster, that means people are out of jail faster, which means people who are not paying need to be in jail faster. If we get the court done faster. I understand we want doing everything during budget season, but that's not what we want. If we can get people to move on with their lives that much quicker, that is our role as government to do that. This makes no sense to not do. When you have everybody who fights each other for a living agreeing that this makes sense, then it makes sense. And I don't understand why we're... Because they didn't come to us in October, we're going to hurt the people who are sitting there waiting to get these statutes of justice. It makes sense. We have a whole backlog. We have a solution to help fix the backlog. Let's follow through with the solution. Makes no sense.
I mean, I see the urgency, but it also makes sense to me that this problem didn't just come up right now. It came up... I mean, we talked to you all last week, and it's been an issue for a while. And it was an issue during our budget process, and it wasn't brought up during the budget process. And I... Can you explain to me again? I don't think I understand quite well enough the issue with using your salary savings from this year? How that is in conflict with the judicial canons? Can you explain that to me? I mean, you mentioned it a little bit right now and...
Let me give you a...
I mean, that's not... I mean, it's money that's allocated to you all during the budget season. It's not money that's coming out of your pocket that would be used for, right? So how is it...
Here's the big problem, Commissioner. In speaking with the Commission for Judicial Conduct, you know, I raised this issue with them because I felt, you know, maybe it can be done. Canon One is very clear. We, as a judiciary, have to be very independent about what we're doing. When we are contracting or hiring someone, that we ultimately are going to be making a call on an evidentiary matter. And there's the appearance of some impropriety that we are now engaging someone that we're going to rule on. It violates those canons. Then we are subject to being either accused or being subjected ourselves to a grievance before the commission. And it just gives the... Now we're not independent. We're not being objective. And so we're the gatekeepers of that evidentiary matter. So that becomes very important to us under those canons. And this is why we are... I was very careful about the way we could do this. They were very clear. It has all the appearances. It was almost like a case where JP was involved with the hot checks, and they were engaging themselves. JP got himself reaped because he was participating in assisting in the prosecution of hot checks. And it almost seemed like we would be the ones almost doing some of the job that our elected DA's doing. And so we don't want to put the county in any kind of situation where we're addressing lawsuits or some kind of litigation or subjecting ourselves to being accused from all the cases you look at. And so I just do that because that's where our canons are set up.
I would say that if funds are available... I mean, I certainly think it is a good idea if funds are available. And I would assume that if you engage in the MOU, the contract wouldn't be with the judges. It would be with the court. So that's a little different. And I just want to make sure that we're clear about... I said this on Monday. The blood test... We like the blood tests because there's more certainty. It doesn't mean that we don't get questioned in court, but there's more certainty. And when Wally asked us to look into exactly what our travel, like how many times do we bring a chemist in? Actually, didn't bring the figure up here, but I know we gave you that information. It's not that often. And it's not that often because of the certainty of the blood test. Like, one of the fights we're fighting right now is, well, if we wait six months, nine months to test it, then somehow the result isn't reliable. There's a preservative in the tube when we take the blood, and the result isn't reliable. Those chemists from DPS would not testify to the level of alcohol in the sample unless it was reliable. So that delay does not affect the results of the blood test. And we haven't had... I was, you know, my gut told me we probably don't bring them in very often. And when... Actually, it was pretty tedious work that Wally asked us to perform, but we don't bring very many of them in because of the certainty of the blood. I mean, when you get stopped for DWI and you don't give us your breath, you go and take your blood, and then you're going to have a hard time fighting the level of alcohol in your system. There might be other issues, the stop, something else, but not that. So make sure the record is clear.
Is there any indication on how long the individual in Abilene might be able to continue to take 30 cases a week?
We don't. They didn't tell us. They actually... We didn't initiate that call. We knew that DPS did not want a one-year MOU. That was kind of my last... Our last communication. They called us. They had the impression that we would not like the fact that blood tests were sent to Abilene. That somehow they got word that my office didn't prefer that. We told the head of the lab here, "That's inaccurate. We want you to test it. Test it, we're good. And you test it as often as you can. We're happy with that." I have had numerous discussions with DPS over the lab. You know, they tell us that it's a 30-day turnaround. We... It's greater than that. And I know that they've been fighting for resources, and there's all sorts of other things going on. But it's a little bit similar to... You might remember, once the law changed in September, that we all got letters... It might have been May. We got letters from DPS indicating that all drug analysis was going to have to be paid by the county. We didn't have much notice. The legislature had ended, and we were... Everybody was surprised. Well, that didn't last but a weekend. My guess is lots of county judges called the governor's office, and the director changed... They changed their mind, and we went back to the way of doing business. So in some ways, I kind of... I really... I want to resolve this, but I also think that DPS has... I like the way you've been doing business, and I'd like to see if we can keep doing that.
That's my only hesitation, is it seems like DPS could be helpful. I mean, as of Monday, we were able to get some of these cases seen. Could there be other opportunities without us funding this and see where we get over the next six months heading into our next budget cycle? I know that doesn't necessarily rely on us having to take this into budget, but I mean, if we see that this is something that's fruitful and they can take even more cases, perhaps more than the 30, or there's another individual in some other part of Texas, and see where that leaves us, and if that shortens that backlog, and then bring this back up during our discussions in the summertime. I don't... That's just, you know...
My only fear with that is I think they made it very clear on Monday that we're not the only county on 254 counties with a backlog. And to say all the other counties are going to pick up El Paso's slack, I don't see it happening. I assume Houston has a pretty big backlog. I assume Dallas has a pretty big backlog. And to say that all the other counties are magically going to be able to pick up our backlog, I would mind. I'd like to...
I think that's accurate. We don't have any idea how long Abilene will do what they do.
I'd like to also see a plan on... On your behalf to... What are you going to do to ask the state to fund this? I mean, we have a delegation that you can talk to, and you guys probably have associations, statewide associations. I'd like to see... I mean, if we're going to approve this, I'd like to see a concrete plan as to how we're going to go about advocating for future funding because we fund this for two years, and if we stop funding it in two years, you're going to have the same problem again, right? I mean, the backlogs are going to... It's going to start stacking up again, and it's something that I don't think is just going to be a two-year fix if we end up funding it. So I, you know, I would really like to see, you know, what a plan as to how we're going to be, you know... If it's, you know, working with the association, with the Judges Association, and working with our delegation. If, you know, if it's a statewide problem, then you would think that other people would want to... I mean, would have a plan and would want to have a plan as well. And because it's not going to stop. As long as we continue to put this program with, you know, testing during the blood testing, it's going to continue to exist after the two years.
We reached out to the delegation. We will be doing that, Commissioner. As we discussed.
Judge, Commissioner, thank you. I think what DPS has done is they've extended a courtesy because they recognize the urgency that El Paso has. And I just have a question to Judge John Chundel because we were told that the chemist will be here in El Paso. You said, hopefully.
The chemist will be here, hopefully.
Okay. And my feeling is, I'm 100% behind this. And if we run into, as we're monitoring these two years, that the state isn't holding up their end of the bargain, or we see that it's not as efficient as we thought we would, it would be... We can go back, whether it's next year in eight months because they haven't had somebody in here, and we have a clause in the MOU that we can cancel. So I'm saying that this is money well, well spent. And it'll make a difference in people's lives.
I totally agree with you, Commissioner.
And I think it would be helpful to, in going into our next budget session for the Commissioners Court and for future budgets, to know where there might be other... budgets, to know where there might be other backlogs so that, um, things like this maybe don't catch the court off, off guard. I know that we talked about there being a backlog in another area, I believe, uh, during last Monday, whether it was in criminal cases or, I, I don't recall. But if there are any other backlogs that we could potentially begin to look at, um, from a budget perspective for more long-range planning, that would be helpful.
But I, I would say that I commend, not only you all, but, uh, judges here locally, a DA or defense department. Because we're really addressing the DWI population a lot better than we used to. You know, we, we now have the monitoring units, we have a successful program here. So we're doing, uh, yeoman's work, uh, to, to start changing behavior. But, uh, you know, law enforcement's busy and, uh, they're doing their job on the streets and so, uh, I, I just think this is a, a good move. A sensible and reasonable opportunity to start addressing some of these issues, I think, for everybody concerned.
Well, now that you've highlighted the issue, I just want to make sure that it's clear to the community that we do have the, the issue regarding the backlog of blood test results. But our efforts on what we do in the court system and what law enforcement is doing on the streets of El Paso is, is really commendable. We're, we're still protecting our streets. The, not every community has, uh, a blood search form, program like we do, that's three hundred and sixty-five days every day of the year. That would not have been possible except with the cooperation of the sheriff and the, and the Commissioners Court. Because we then, we renegotiated the contract so we would have a nurse available so that we can do that. Law enforcement is doing their job on the streets and I just, I would be, um, concerned that just because we have this issue, somehow the message is sent to the community that there's, there's really a problem with the way we handle DWI cases and there is not. All right? There is a delay in getting some of these to court. And we really need to address that, whether we do it at budget time, we do it now, we need to address it. But the effort between what happens in the courthouse and what's happening on the street, it really is admirable. The DWI court, the Judge Chundu is, he won't toot his own horn, the DWI court that he has, right? It's nationally recognized. So we have made really some, some really great efforts to, to do what we're doing to protect this community. The delay is an issue and we should address the issue. But that doesn't mean that our effort on these cases, uh, is somehow lacking or insufficient or somehow this community is not protected. That is not true.
And Mr. Harburg, we have identified funding?
Well, both of the elected offices have said, have stated they, they didn't have any, any any excess in their budget that they would like to volunteer. One for judicial canons, one, the special DA has got his, his funds allocated for the budget here. Looking at just contingencies alone, we have contingencies professional services that could be a funding source. We've had internal discussions and we're going to talk about Jol's, Jol's. We have another source we could discuss. It's not a sustainable source, it's a, it's a one-time contribution. But within the criminal, uh, CJC Department, Criminal Justice Coordination, we've got a number of vacancies that have existed, um, since the beginning of the fiscal year. Got about fifty-two thousand dollars, um, of salary savings to date. Now, it's not a sustainable model because as soon as he fills those positions, the, the CJC director and a couple of, uh, staff that work under that director, um, then the cost model will, will need to be, um, re-appropriated for a subsequent fiscal period. But we've got most of it identified. If we wanted to look at the CJC and keep any question of the propriety or potential liability.
Judge, and on that, uh, that's why I do, if, if the court is interested in funding this now, um, the, it is not, and there have been years past where the county has said to, um, elected offices, would you transfer some of your budget savings to the general admin account? Or in this case to CJC to oversee this contract or for, for other purposes? And so I, I've asked Christina if, is it in the review of the judicial canon of conduct, canons of conduct, whether or not it would be inappropriate? If the judiciary has any savings from salary or vacancies, um, could they not pull their savings with ours, move it out of theirs, just this one-time transfer? Um, not, not an ongoing budget cut. This is a one-time transfer due to savings to this G admin or the CJC line item to pay a contract where they would not oversee the contract. They would just be foregoing funds that they have not utilized in their budget this year to help pay for it this year because it is a mid-year budget request.
And what was the answer?
Judge, I was shaking your head.
How is that any different than us paying it? It was just put in a different account, but we're still the ones paying it.
Well, Judge, the money that you got in your account came from the same account I'm talking about putting it back to. So it came from that account anyway. So it came, comes from the general fund.
And the answer from Christina was?
You know, I was asked to research this issue when the issue had first come up. Um, per se, there, in my opinion, I have not found anything on point to say this is illegal. However, I do believe, and I did call the, the State Commission on Judicial Conduct, they did agree that it does create an, uh, an issue of impropriety. And as a former prosecutor, I can also say that these do come up as evidentiary issues which result in appeals. So those, those issues and those factors and that logic certainly, certainly do exist. So I, I agree with that just from a practicing standpoint. Um, in terms of the budgetary issue, I think, in my opinion, it's attenuated once you transfer that money somewhere else. Now, what I had mentioned to Betsy and what we've talked about in other circumstances as, as well is what the Commissioners Court has to be cautious of and cognizant of is that you're not interfering with any of the core functions of the judiciary. And that is not just the judiciary, but any other elected office in which you are uh, moving or dealing with any of those funds. Once that happens, there could possibly be an argument, hey, this is improper, we cannot do that. Um, and so that's your analysis and that's the question to be asked. I don't know what specifically, which fund out of the judiciary this is being looked at to transfer, how that impacts overall, uh, the operations of that elected official's office, but that's, that's certainly a concern. And so those are some of the questions and issues that need to be worked through with the Commissioners Court.
And Christina, Betsy, if I can interject something, the fees and fines that are collected, I understand, go into the general fund, which is almost, almost the same thing that you all were talking about. There's, there's fees and fines that are collected from.
There's a DWI evaluation fee that we collect.
Alcohol and alcohol and drug cases.
But which go into the general fund?
Yes, that's not our money. That's your money.
And then there's the PR bond fee that's also being collected. That goes into general fund. So all of these individuals who are on alcohol margin units who are PR bond supervision. Fees being ordered by the court. I think we identified that there was funding that was being, uh, collected. And so, uh, that's assisted. Now, whether it's being collected totally, Commissioner, I'm not sure. But we are ordering it. And we're expecting our, we're expecting that the defendants are paid.
Um, well, I just make sure I understand how our budget works. At the end of the year, any unused money goes back to the general fund.
Goes back to the general fund, goes to the fund balance. If all appropriations close out, the fund to reserves.
We get it today or we get it in the last day of fiscal year. I'm not worried about forcing a possible appeal over getting the money today and not later. I know we have money in our accounts to be able to do it. I just, I understand the need of, like Commissioner President says about protecting the, the budget and not having people come to do this, but I also see the community impact of this sitting over someone's head for six, nine, ten months when it doesn't mean to me. It can be done in, in less time. The amount of savings that we could have in giving people out of jail, off the books, on with their lives, making, making money and not being a drain on society. I think the more to make up for the amount of money we spend to have a specialist in El Paso. And we may have a specialist needed more if we don't have to fly him in. There, there may be a reason why we don't have a specialist very often because it costs so much and it takes so much time and so, so, so time consuming. I, we have a role. And it's thrown in my face continuously. A lot of times what we do isn't to make money. You know, we don't have a scary golf park to make money because we lose money. But we have no problem throwing a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar to the golf park. We, we have a problem with hiring a specialist to do blood? I have a problem with it. So.
Commissioner Pedis, did you want to?
No, I mean, it's, how, how long has the, um, blood draw program been in place?
March twenty fourteen.
And we've known that there's been a backlog starting since?
Not sure. What happens, uh, Commissioner, is cases escalate. Uh, we become a larger community.
When did you first become aware of the?
We ran the numbers in October. And honestly, this is a pre-trial matter that should have been brought up a long time ago. Once it reached to three hundred, four hundred, we're now at six hundred. So I ran the numbers because I became frustrated having to reset all my cases due to unfilled DWIs. So I asked the county court administrator to run me numbers. They came back at seven hundred and thirty-six. That was in November. That's when we grouped. That's when we called the stakeholders and we said, we have a problem here. What are possible solutions? We're here in supporting roles. That's it. This is not our project. That was our, we're only here in a supporting role. But I can tell you it was seven hundred and thirty-six last month. That's when we became alarmed.
It's not necessarily the number of DWI cases that has grown. It's just the number of blood draws. And it's, that's what I'm saying. It's the, the DA's policy that began in twenty fourteen that resulted in the increase. And again, just viewing this budgetarily, this is not a contingency. And, and that's just been my only issue with this. I have no problem, uh, finding a funding mechanism to do it. I have no problem finding a funding mechanism to do it this year. But this, it, it sends a very poor signal to the community that we're dipping into contingency funds in the first quarter of a fiscal year when a real contingency or a real emergency can, can emerge in the fourth quarter. And, and if, if this is approved, I think we need to take a serious look at our contingency funds, um, next budget cycle. Then I think there's too much money in our contingency funds if we have the luxury of paying for policy decisions that should have been addressed during the budget cycle. It's my only issue. I, I have no issue with, with paying for, for blood draws somehow, but there, there should be other, some other arrangement. This wasn't something that should have been, that didn't just bring up on us like, like a lawsuit or a, or a decision by a court that was unexpected, which is typically what we use our contingency funds for. Uh, this was a policy decision that was made, uh, three years ago. I'm sure the backlog has been growing steadily since then. And, uh, this isn't what we should be using our contingency funds for. And that's my only issue with, with this.
Sir, I believe that you might be here to, on this item. I'm not sure if you wanted to speak or we're just here to, to, for the vote, but I wanted to afford the opportunity to speak if you had any words or.
No, I'm just.
Okay.
Judge, just to clarify the, the evaluation fees, we did an analysis of promontancy in the last two years. The average revenues that have come in are related to DWI evaluation fees of about twelve thousand dollars. Um, the, the evaluation fee can be charged by the, the judges upon conviction. And it can be up to the amount of the cost of the evaluation. So I understand some of this is pre.
Emergency.
It's, it's pre-conviction. And I couldn't find anything in the statutes that allows the judges to, to order anybody to pay prior to conviction.
We do. There are, uh, PR bond fees. And I just don't know how much has been collected, but on every ignition interlock, there's at least a minimum of ten dollars per month charged. So I don't know how much has been collected for that.
And the PR bond fees do not anywhere close cover the cost of PR bond, PR bond administration.
And so the, the individual in Abilene would be working, if we approve this today, the individual in Abilene, who Commissioner, I'm not sure if you heard that part of the conversation probably on. Would that person continue to help as well in conjunction with this new?
I'm not sure that was the conversation, Mr. Parson.
That's, I, that is outside the MOU. The, uh, my guess is, uh, just so we're clear, we don't file the case until we get the results. So there are, there are, there could be, because the defendant has multiple charges, a delay because they want to process the case together. So this DWI is out there waiting, determine whether they're going to be charged and they have other cases. So these cases don't get disposed of. They have, there are continuances granted because this case is still in limbo. All right? It, there are other issues with the DPS lab. I mean, there are not just blood. We have, we have, uh, issues regarding just analysis of regular controlled substances and, and other items. And so that's another issue. The MOU, uh, were to make the chemist available, but this, the offer, as Commissioner Lyon said, the courtesy that DPS has extended here is that they have a chemist who's available now, who will do about thirty cases a week for us. And we did, I couldn't tell you with certainty how long that would continue, but they have him available. And we, we are going to start moving our blood in that direction until, until they tell us they can't do it.
Now, Judge, uh, lighter for Mr. Parson. You gotta understand also, the other picture. When these folks are arrested and come to our jail and placed on any kind of bond conditions, and we don't resolve ourselves from just letting the case, we are still monitoring. We're still monitoring whether they're on those monitors, whether they're not drinking, things of that nature. What we're trying to prevent also is that person may be committing another one, but we have this this issue going on. So we, we have a lot of things going on. You know, we have to commend a lot of people that are doing their work. We're overburning the PR folks. Uh, I think they're probably monitoring over a thousand cases of this nature at any given time. And so they're constantly reporting to the courts about how these folks are doing. So while we're waiting for this aspect over here to happen, constantly still having to monitor folks, making sure that public safety is our, our predominant concern. So I understand, Commissioner Pedis, uh, what led up to this. This is a situation where, uh, if we don't have it moving, a case moving, it, it's just, it's just there. But somehow we're still monitoring the situation. Because there's still concerns out there for our public.
Well, Judge, the last question that, uh, or last fact I'll bring up that I'm aware of that was asked but hasn't been answered yet is the training, the training type and the, and the learning curve. So the staff in the district attorney's office did, uh, confirm that if we did engage in a secretment, uh, we get an upfront, um, uh, fully trained individual that would take over the caseload. The, the new position they would have to hire would be the, the trainee. So it would not, uh, there would not be a long learning curve to handle our El Paso cases. El Paso cases would be handled right off the bat.
And the, the PR bond fees for the last two years, they're average about twenty-five thousand a year.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
Having heard all that, I make a motion to approve.
A second. So where, where, where are we taking the money from?
So that's what we're going to do. Salary savings from, um, the department or are we going to allocate from, if we're doing contingencies, the recommended account is contingencies professional services.
Um, why don't we take from the CJC that what we can?
Okay. So it'd be fifty-two thousand from CJC, the balance of twenty-five thousand dollars would come from general administrative contingency professional service.
Is all seventy-five or seventy-seven in one?
Yeah, and, and I'll actually work up, we'll have it on a subsequent VA. Uh, your item today is not to change the budget. I'll have it on the VA for, uh, January eighth. But what I'll do is it'll be a pro rata amount that will be in effect from January forward. Uh, so this seventy-seven may actually end up being closer to the fifty and, and I would lean towards taking the CJC one-time salary savings first and, and, uh, resort to using contingencies last if needed.
Or we might be able to find some other place to pull this in.
Um, modify my motion to, uh, reflect what you just indicated.
And so this is for one, for up until budget?
Yeah.
Time like this, your whole business is a two-year.
By this approval, you've committed to two, um, twenty-four month, a twenty-four month term for a total, uh, commitment of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
We'll cover next year's.
Six seventy-one. Thank you.
You're if.
So we'll be able to pay seventy-seven now and then the other later?
It would be a portion out of eighteen, um, and the entire year of nineteen and probably a little bit of trickle into FY twenty. Three months into FY twenty.
We'll, we'll handle that come next month.
Yes, sir.
And so what you're, what you're making a motion of, what you're taking the action on is on actual approval of the interlocal agreement, which is for the, the two-year term for the chemist. And Wally had indicated, uh, the budgetary issues, you're going to put it on in a future year. So it's just the approval of the interlocal two-year period. So it's whatever's in the backup. Okay.
And Commissioner, you mentioned a clause, an, an out clause.
Yes, uh, just like any other, other, uh, MOUs, there's always an out clause. There, we see that there is no production from DPS or, or there are other issues that arise that we can, uh, stop.
It's intended.
It's termination for convenience. That's correct.
And were the DA's discretionary funds ever discussed during this census?
We did discuss it. I had a conversation with the, uh, with the district attorney yesterday. We talked about that prior to your arrival and his planned appropriations for the year. He's of the opinion that, that he is not planning on using any of those and not making them available.
But there are funds available in his discretionary account? But there, but there are funds available in his discretionary account?
He, he, he has a discretionary budget, uh, totally. I mean, is there, is there not a way to take the money from the savings, from the judge and put it towards something else? And then take budget, money from that budget and put it towards this? So it's, I mean, it just, I, I'm just, you know, it's all, it's all from the same pot. That's the problem. Like, I don't understand why there's an issue if it comes from the same pot. But, I mean, if, 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 if there's money there in, in, in those savings. I mean, it's smoke and, it's smoke and mirrors, but it's, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I don't know. I just don't understand the. Risking, uh, an appeal is not worth the transferring of the possible twenty thousand dollars that you need to transfer. I think we can find, we'll find the savings when the time comes, if the need comes. But risking an appeal or a false conviction or, or whatever over, over, over the smoke and mirrors. They say, well, I didn't take the bribe. My sister did. I mean, it doesn't count. You, you got the money. I don't, it doesn't work that way.
So while you'll give us a report on the eighth of January as to where this funding will come from, it sounds like for this first year, it's been identified potentially out of CJC staff savings.
And if we're sure, any, actually, what we could do is we could talk about, you, you could also not fund all of it now, knowing we're going to have to fund it. But we could also, um, go into the second or third quarter and look at where, what other savings have, have.
I can, I can incrementally fund this from a liability standpoint. Um, you know, we're, we've got a definite, a definitive amount from the time we approve the agreement from the point in time that they feel like incur the costs. I, we can, I could incrementally fund it quarter by quarter as well.
Just before you vote, just because this is not a false conviction issue, all right? That's not what's going to play here. I just want to make sure the community watches these. That, that, that's not what's going on here. There could be, there could be an issue regarding whether or not they're funding.
That's what I'm, that's what we're talking about.
That could be, I think you heard the county attorney say that probably is attenuated. That's a decision you all can make if you want.
And that's what we're talking about right now.
But you, you got my attention when you said that, okay? And that's not what's going on here.
I, I do think that the court recognizes that there clearly is a need. I think just the rub is the fact that it didn't come during the budget cycle, but that there is a, there is a clear need. And so we need to figure out if the court wishes to vote favorably for this item, how we fund that. Um, clearly it would help make family members who have been impacted by this situation happier. It has been, uh, an, it's gonna, we've seen an impact in our CJC and the work that they're doing and in our court system. And so clearly there's a benefit, and I think all of us recognize that. It's just the funding piece of it. So let's just be very clear that I think we all support the fact that we don't want to see a nine-month backlog on blood draws. But we have a motion and a second. That's correct.
So can, can you clarify what the motion is? Because I don't understand. So this, this, uh, stated by Ms. Sanchez.
It's just as written, which is to, uh, it's a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Texas Department of Public Safety, El Paso Crime Lab, for one full-time, uh, position to perform blood alcohol analysis in amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-seven cents for a two-year term.
And, and, and the funding is coming fifty thousand from CJC and twenty-five from? The funding's on the eighth. What's that? The funding's on the eighth.
So they, we'll have to identify where we'll come up with the other twenty-five thousand.
On the eighth of January.
And how much of it we actually need. We don't know how much we'll need this fiscal year. We need to run some numbers.
We won't, we won't need much, but.
Commissioner Pettis?
No.
Commissioner Lyon?
You know, one of the things that, uh, that, uh, as you all know, I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind this program. But I understand that issues don't fit in nice packages for our bud, for our budget season. But I'm looking at all three of you, and all three of you knew this was coming. And it would be, uh, a big assistance to the court, to our public, that you do, uh, give us forewarning that you, you've seen the trend here. You work with us every day, and it would help us a hundred percent to plan the, our, our budget as been stated before. So my vote is yes, with, with, uh, that, uh, request, that we work together a little more, uh, closer.
Yes, sir.
Just to clear the record, these are pre-trump cases. We do not have jurisdiction over that. That's CJC.
I'm just.
But we will work with it.
Commissioner Stowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the, uh, everyone here, we understand your perspective of the issues. We do appreciate the fact that you work with us. We'll be able to get on this one. What we do is we understand the situation. And we'll be working with all of us. Thank you. With that, in my mugging season.
Mr. Parsons. Thank you so much for your presentation. Have a happy holiday.
Merry Christmas all of you.
Merry Christmas. At the judge's request, we're going to go ahead and go on to item number five. Item number five is to receive a presentation on El Paso's Order Youth Athletic Association on proposed partnership with the county to make improvements to Gallegos Park and the long-term facility's use of the.
I don't know if Ms. Palacios is.
I saw her. She was here.
They were all outside. Let me get them.
Good morning.
I understand that we have guests here with us this morning, so I want to make sure that we.
If you're ready, I can start yours. Good morning, Judge Commissioner Norma Palacios with the Public Works Department. This morning, joining us is Mrs. Christie Borden, Mrs. Stephanie Tana Monaco, and Dr. Abu. They are, um, represent the El Paso Border Youth Association. And in 2016, they contacted the Public Works Department. They wanted, uh, they reached out and had a proposal to sublease a portion of land that we lease from the PSP. They are interested in, um, subleasing approximately twenty-five acres of Gallegos Park to build a facility that includes baseball and softball fields. And so I will turn it over to them so they can brief the court on their proposal. And then we'll come back and entertain any questions of court mind.
I want, I want to thank you, Judge Commissioners, for having us today. We're pleased to be here. It's a pleasure to be here to, uh, present our project. Um, again, I'm Stephanie Tana Monaco. I'm the executive director for El Paso Border Youth. I was fortunate enough to, uh, have the privilege to take this job in May of this year. Uh, Christie Borden is our director of development. And Dr. Dwayne Abu is the founder and president of the Board of Directors. And Christie is going to take us through the PowerPoint. We have a short PowerPoint, and then after that, of course, we'd be able to address your questions.
Thank you again for having us. It's really great to be here. Uh, we have a presentation for you to give you a little bit of background on El Paso Border Youth before we, uh, discuss the Gallegos Park project. El Paso Border Youth was founded in the year 2000 with a mission to create educational and developmental opportunities for children through baseball and softball. We do this with a philosophy of education through athletics that provides academic support to student athletes and that elevates the skill levels of El Paso players and coaches. We do this because competitive athletic programs contribute to the teaching and development of young students by providing opportunities to understand the rewards that come from dedication to a greater purpose and to develop their physical, intellectual, and personal skills. Over a thousand kids a year receive structured physical activities and academic support through the work of El Paso Border Youth. And over the years of our existence in the community, we've been able to assist over fifty high school students in, in attaining higher education scholarships through their work with El Paso Border Youth. El Paso Border Youth serves, uh, young population. Uh, we provide programming for kids aged six to eighteen coming from the region. Some from as far away as Van Horn, Roswell, Alamogordo, of course, Las Cruces. And here at home, we serve an extremely large young population. El Paso is the eighteenth largest city in the United States. And interestingly, we are ranked thirteenth in the concentration of children ages two through eighteen. So we have an extraordinarily large young population. And El Paso County as a whole, as you know, has an eighty-two percent Hispanic ethnicity. And we serve communities in the outlying area of El Paso with up to one hundred percent Hispanic population. With, uh, twenty-one percent of the population holding a bachelor's degree or higher, El Paso residents have the lowest incomes among all major Texas cities. And we all know that improved educational attainment rates have been a priority for El Paso for a long time to support job creation and our, our collective, um, priority of raising the capital income in our community. Uh, the focus in, at El Paso Border Youth through all of our programming is educational achievement, educational attainment, whether it's elementary level or all the way through to the high school level. Uh, some milestones in our, uh, history. We, as I said, we were founded in 2000, but in 2003, we received our 501(c)(3) designation. In 2011, we opened the base, which is our indoor training facility to support baseball and softball school development. In 2014, we partnered with Clint Independent School District to launch Base Play RBI, our after-school program. In 2015, we received an endowment to support the development of an outdoor facility. And we also received a five-year grant from the Hunt Family Foundation to sustain our Base Play RBI program. In 2016, we affiliated with Major League Baseball through their youth programs under RBI. And in 2017, or also in 2016, we affiliated with the AAA team here in El Paso to form Chihuahua's Next. In 2017, our base play program was one of four softball teams in the nation to be invited to participate in the All-Star Game in, in Miami. And 2017, also Chihuahua's Next, our, um, skill development program was invited by Major League Baseball, we were invited by Major League Baseball to provide the names of two high school students that were taken to participate in an elite development series in Gordo Beach, Florida. So they worked with USA softball coaches and professionals to, uh, enhance their skill level. And lastly, in 2017, Chihuahua's Next launched a high school summer league, which served four hundred high school students over the summer on 2016. And we culminated that, that project with a get, an All-Star Game at Southwest University Park, an inaugural game. And our programming strategy begins by serving some of the most vulnerable students in El Paso County. We do that through Base Play RBI, which is an after-school program that we developed, as I said, in 2014 in partnership with the Clint Independent School District. We're now in our fourth year of serving the children in Montana Vista, Horizon City, and Clint. And in 2016, Base Play became an RBI program under Major League Baseball Youth Programs. While most of you are familiar with, uh, communities on the peripheral area of the county, what may come as a surprise is the number of residents that live in those communities. In these outlying areas, in the colonial communities, over one-fifth of Texas's four hundred thousand colonial residents live in El Paso County. So the, over ninety thousand people live in the colonial communities on the periphery of El Paso County. There are two hundred and thirty-three estimated known colonias, and all of them are characterized by the typical lack of infrastructure. But more importantly, in our experience, by the isolation from resources that we see working in these areas of the county. Base Play targets students who are struggling academically or behaviorally. And over fifty-two percent of the kids we serve live in the Clint ISD colonial communities. We're active in eight of the ten eligible schools in Clint Independent School District. And we serve fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students through the program. Base Play is offered at no cost. And when our players graduate after the sixth grade, they're, they have the opportunity to be pulled back into border youth programming through Chihuahua's Next. The Avid Program that we've worked to coordinate a handout with the school district, which is a program designed to close the achievement gap. And they also come back into the program, into Base Play itself as practice coaches and assistant coaches, mentoring the fourth graders and fifth graders that are, that are in the program. In the 2016, 2017 academic year, we processed four hundred and eighty-five registrations for base play over two seasons of play, fall and spring. And of the, about sixty percent of our, our service population is struggling. Of the kids that come into the program failing at least one class, eighty-two percent are able to transition to passing by the end of the season of play with Base Play. In the summer of 2016, we were fortunate to participate in an assessment with Columbia School of Public Health through their International Families Aid Initiative. They came out and spent the summer with us evaluating our target population. The data we collected on the kids while we're out there working with them, height and weight data, uh, grade data. And, uh, they also did a study around acculturation and nutrition with the kids. The graph on the left is one of the outcomes from the Columbia Study, which shows our ability to, uh, recruit our target population. And you'll see we target kids that are hovering at the pass fail line. And you'll see, uh, by the histogram, that the majority of our students are right at that seventy-grade point average that, which is a CD grade point average. In the graph on the right, you see the students' academic performance over a, a season of play. The yellow squares indicate failing classes. You can see there's a concentration of yellow squares on the left-hand side of the, um, grid, and they diminish over time as the students progress through the three-week grade checks that we do during the season of play. The study also found that Base Play RBI's colonial residents had an average BMI that was higher by a statistically significant amount, which was ten percent, than non-colonial residents. To learn, to learn more, uh, the students that, that worked with us through Columbia used the newest final sign tool from Pfizer as a template to measure the health literacy of the students in the program. And the assessment found that ninety percent of the kids enrolled in our summer 2016 program were unable to answer one of the four questions in, uh, the survey correctly, which was an indication of how challenged the kids are with nutritional litters. The second arm of our programming is represented by the base. The base is our indoor training facility. It's a fourteen thousand square foot training facility that we believe is the premier facility in the community and certainly the repository of expertise for baseball and softball in El Paso. We have a large professional coaching staff and outstanding guest instructors from universities across the nation. The base provides instructional lessons, private lessons, camps, and clinics, and we do it all at a minimal cost. Revenues from the base support the programmatic goals of El Paso Border Youth. And the third piece in our programming strategy is Chihuahua's Next. It was formed in 2016 through the partnership with, uh, the AAA team, and it targets student athletes of all ages that have advanced baseball and softball abilities. abilities. El Paso falls far behind other cities in the southwest in preparing student athletes for scholarship opportunities. We've learned this over twenty years working with students with elite-level skills. And according to NCAA data, El Paso ranks behind both Tucson and Albuquerque in the number of students that even register for eligibility. That's a requirement to be considered for an athletic scholarship. In two thousand and fifteen, we began holding an annual NCAA seminar to boost these numbers. The seminar is offered, it's open to the public. We work with the school districts to get the information out, to include as many students and families as possible, and it's offered at no cost. This year's seminar is going to be held January twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. If you guys have any kids that need help in the process, or if you know any communities that we can reach out to, we really want to, we would like to reach as large of an audience as possible through this because it's really an important piece in moving forward. In addition, Chihuahua's Next offers a whole host of pro-style clinics. The next series is scheduled for the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of January in conjunction with the NCAA seminar. And we, once again, will have John Schumaker, Travis Barbary, Marty Reed, who will work here in El Paso with outstanding high school players that are identified either through our work or through our affiliations with their coaches. On the softball side, we will host pro-coaches Jennifer Saling, Lindsey Webster, El Paso Border Youth Director of Softball Operations, Sarah Fuller, who is an Olympic hopeful, and our coach Christine Stewart, working with the girls to accomplish the same thing. Finally, to further enhance the level of play, as I said earlier, we launched the high school instructional league this summer. That will be a recurring event. We served over four hundred players on two thousand and sixteen. This year, we're anticipating six hundred players next year as we grow in our reach with the coaches we're working with to pull the teams together. And our season culminated with the inaugural high school All-Star Game at Southwest University Park, which was an amazing event. We had over a thousand El Pasoans come out to support the kids, to cheer them on for the game, and we expect it to be bigger and better every year that goes by. Which brings us to why we're here this morning, Gallegos Park. As I stated earlier, El Paso has a large young population and really not enough facilities in number or size to serve the demand for youth athletics in our community. In two thousand and sixteen, we approached the county to discuss revitalizing the fields at Gallegos Park. And Norma Palacios and Lydia's hiding here somewhere, the Public Works Department have worked with us extensively to get to this meeting today. We have an aerial view of the park. And on a recent visit to the park, we documented the current conditions of the fields for reference in this meeting today. What prompted us to open the discussion with the county about a proposed public-private partnership or the conditions of the site, and more than anything, the belief that it could serve a much larger population? This brings us to the conceptual layout for the proposed El Paso County, El Paso Border Youth partnership. The project is shown in the green rectangle to the right. It's a proposed site plan that lays out a baseball quad, a softball quad, and a small indoor training facility, a maintenance building, and an office space. The project is scheduled in a phased development fashion over a five-year period, and this structure was adopted in order to have minimal impact on other areas of the park. Will we, providing, we move forward, we'll finalize the site plan for presentation to the county and the PSB in collaboration with state-of-the-art facility planners and field architects, which we have long relationships with. The estimated cost for the total project is four point five million, and we'll include lighting on all of the fields you see laid out in the graphic. The benefits of a public-private partnership include revitalizing the park, creating a vibrant programming space to serve a showpiece for the neighborhood and the surrounding areas, to serve more children, which we feel there's a tremendous need in the school districts on the periphery of the county, to generate a positive economic impact on the area, to provide opportunities for advancement to the student athletes in our community. But more importantly, we feel like the project is going to pull in new resources to uplift our student athletes, to reach a broader audience in El Paso and also in surrounding West Texas and the next in the year. This slide is a graphic representation of El Paso Border Youth's mission, vision, and programming strategy, and it's all centered around the philosophy of education through athletics. Early on in our programming, we really wanted to capture what we do in a statement, and through the work that we've done across the years, we believe that every player who gets an education. We have a short video of our kids for you, very short, very loud. This is opening game. So with that, we welcome any questions or conversations that you'd like to have.
I've been on many meetings with this, with a couple of you. Now, the four million that you're talking about, you guys are paying, not us, correct?
That is correct.
That's the important thing.
Yes, sir.
And the nice thing is, this came at a perfect time because we had already set aside funding to re-sod and put in water for the Gallegos Park. But by then, securing their section, it gives us the ability to refocus all of our energies to the area for soccer fields. So there'll be a baseball field section and a soccer field section, and my kids play out there, and my son, last time played, his knees were covered in blood because he digs when he shit his egg. And it'll just give the kids the opportunity to have much better fields to play on, both baseball and for our ability to fix up the soccer fields, to have more different-sized fields for everybody, and better water, less goat heads, less stickers, less giant wood logs and pitchers' mouths. And it just, I think it's a great collaboration between private public's ability to make sure the kids have a much better playing experience.
Thank you.
So what are the next steps, Norma? This is, today's item is just a presentation without approving anything, so what can we expect moving forward?
I'd like to bring back an item to the court, asking authorization to negotiate a contract with El Paso Border Youth. And that contract will identify the exact acreage that they will be using, also, but the county will be responsible as far as maintenance of the facility. There will be, we've talked, there is a draft document that I'd like to share, also with the court at that time. And basically, we've also talked to the Gallegos Independent School District, we've gone to them a couple of times, and they have agreed to partner with us. That partnership would be with El Paso Border Youth on the use of the fields. But the last meeting that we had was a couple of weeks ago, and they agreed to use, to partner with us. And so those are our next steps, just bringing back an item.
So the actual item we would bring back, if the court, today, we're not asking for, we're basically asking for your approval to continue negotiating, and what we would bring you back is an actual proposed contract?
That's right.
One more question. Since we lease some lock water from our land from the PSB, we just need to make sure our lease and their lease match?
I did talk to them already. They have a draft also, because we wanted to do that before coming to the court, and then they decide, they might say that that was not something we could do.
Right.
And so we've been talking to them, and they are in agreement that we can sublease.
Okay.
And to extend our lease.
To extend our lease, both, yes.
We gave you a forty-year lease, but we were just kidding because we only have ten. Just making sure those numbers match.
I've already met with them.
Good to hear.
Since we moved up our strategic planning this year, is this something that you feel is appropriate for strategic planning purposes to kind of sort out sort of the overall timeframe, goals, and objectives, and how this fits into two R strategic planning? Or would you rather have it as a separate component?
I always love for us to plan.
We're doing strategic planning in January.
Correct, yes, sir.
Right, and so I feel it's something that at least we can probably see how.
The only, yes, sir. Definitely, I wouldn't have a problem discussing it during strategic planning. The only reason why I believe we have worked on this and continue to work on this is, we had brought it to Commissioners Court once before and received approval to continue to work on it. And so now, this is kind of the culmination of getting to that final step before we go to a contract negotiations. And we've even talked, even, I mean, through this entire process, we've talked about terms and conditions.
Yes.
On this partnership, and...
So you feel it's more of an advanced stage?
I do feel like it's more of an advanced stage. And the other reason why I wouldn't want to delay much longer is, we have this funding that we've been holding to improve Gallegos Park. As you know, we've done the improvements in other parks, but we've delayed on Gallegos because we wanted to not do the work and then tear it up and make, we want to be efficient with our funding. But I'd like to move forward with the improvements.
And I agree, the reason I agree is because it's something we've already approved, and so, other than this partnership, but I would like to see those soccer fields finalized.
And this is not really an answer to that, but one thing that both we alluded to, but we weren't clear about, and right now, the way the park is laid out, there's a soccer field, a baseball field, a soccer field. It's really not well-designed or planned, and the court authorizes us to move forward with this. The way, I mean, obviously, this will put all the ball fields together and then all the soccer fields together, and we're also, it'll give us the opportunity to provide different-sized fields for different age groups together. So you don't have an older kid filled right next to a three-year-old, three, four-year-old filled. It'll be the three- and four-year-old filled, the, you know, older kids filled. Just the results, the results will be good for the community and for the use of the park. So that's, that's what would be my hesitation in delaying to the...
And...
Thank you very much for this. It was a very thorough presentation.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for entertaining our program in detail. We wanted to share that with you to provide a context for the project. And also, certainly, it's a phased development, so there will be that first phase, which we have potentially allocated twenty-four months to that planning and groundbreaking and infrastructure piece to the project. So coordinating with a planning initiative might be perfect timing for the development phases that's choosing.
Oh, you're doing, okay, thank you.
Now, the other thing, there was going to be an MOU with, can you two be able to use the fields? There's also going to be certain times for the board of the county to be able to use the fields as well, correct?
In the agreement, you have six days.
Yes, six days that we would identify.
That would allow us, we've had opportunities to bring in tournaments at the sports park, but there weren't necessarily enough fields for the size of the tournament. And what we would do is try to coordinate in the, negotiate in the contract, that if, in those cases, those are the days that we may use, exercise our option under the contract to use some of these fields down the line to, once they're up and ready and available, to help with that kind of, those kinds of situations where the tournament's bigger than what we have.
Are some of these, and you may have touched on it during your presentation, are they lit or are they lighted?
They will be lit.
This is the cost of lighting on all the fields.
Oh, great. And from the time that it's approved and you get into the construction phase, how long do you anticipate it would take?
We just slated five years for the phases of development.
For the completion, for the completion. From the time they hit, it would probably take two to four months for engineering and architecture, et cetera. Hopefully, we'd like to start by the fall of two thousand and eighteen, at least with construction.
And we've had discussions also about the phases, so that as they're facing the project and it wouldn't, it would, we would still be allowed to use the park.
And it would be phased where we would do, we would do two softball fields and then two baseball fields, and then they would be done in the second phase. In the first phase, so they would be usable then, we would move to the other four fields.
That's good to know, thank you.
Commissioner, any other questions? So we look forward to seeing something on our agenda early in January to formally approve and train to contact, contract negotiations.
So Judge, I want to clarify that. What I'm asking for today, what we're asking for today, is just not official action, but to authorize us to go ahead and proceed negotiating the contract. And then what we would actually bring you back is a contract.
It's a consensus, because there's no, not much of a rationale. And to work with the county attorney's office, I think you've already reached out to somebody there.
We're working closely with the county attorneys.
Right, we work with the county attorneys for the PSB. And there's been a lot of work behind the scenes, yes.
And I'm glad the school district is now actively participating.
Yes, initially, they were not interested, but we've met with them twice again since then, and they're on board now.
I should speak with one of the board directors.
Yes, they're excited.
I think we have consensus to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us. Very, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Now, I think that we're going to take item ten next, but we've been asked to delete that, so.
Item number ten is to approve and authorize the county judge to sign a historic site tourist promotion and preservation services agreement with the San Diego Genealogy and Historical Society, a Texas nonprofit corporation for the tourist promotion of a historic local status museum and old county jail located in San Diego, Texas, for forty-one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for a period beginning October first, two thousand and seventeen, and ending September thirty eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Funds are available in SR Tourism Promotions, Los Portales, contract number two thousand and seventeen zero seven nine five. Could you please have a motion to delete?
Sure.
Second. Commissioner Vezes.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Staudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Higgin.
Aye.
Judge Voe.
Aye.
Motion carries.
If we could then take items six and seven, please, not together, but...
Item number six, pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code Sections one one four point oh two three, one one four point oh two four, one one four point oh two five, and one one four point oh two six. Please accept the attached presentation and the interim financial report for the month ended November thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. The interim financial report is located on the internet at http://www.epcounty.com/auditor/ Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Michael Almas from the County Auditor's Office, Financial Support Division. I will be presenting the unaudited interim financial report for the month ended November thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Through this report, I will be moving over the presentation and reporting duties to my...
Claudia Hernandez.
And Iman Garcia from the financial report.
We'll have a little bit of transition. Claudia's one of our new employees, so Michael is just, this is probably the last report that he'll be providing, but he's bringing them to get them kicked off, and from here forward, you'll be seeing some new faces.
We're glad to have you here.
So as I said before, this is the unaudited interim financial report for this month ended November thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. As always, I'm first presenting the report that gets published in the El Paso Times every month. This is just a summary of all of the financial reporting that we publish on our website. This is just for information purposes. First off, we'll start off with revenues. This first slide presents a breakdown by fund type of all revenue collected within the county. I've highlighted the county general fund. I've highlighted the county general funds so that for ease of view. As you can see, we've collected this month 12.5 million dollars of revenue and a year-to-date, we've collected 17.1 as of November. Next slide is the general fund revenue by source, and this slide shows the change in revenue receipts compared to the same month last fiscal year. For the most part, the general fund revenue collections are following a similar trend to last year. There are a few changes though. As you can see, a big change in property taxes, but that's mainly just to the, you know, change in property valuation and new property. And the other big change is the charges for services, which I'll explain in the next slide. And the other small change that you see there is in other financing sources. And that's just a timing issue, transfers that we do between funds. As I said before, this is just an explanation for the decrease in the, the 2.4 million dollar decrease in the charges for services category. Again, this is another timing delay in the billing receipt from the federal president reimbursement program.
Michael, on that question, it's just timing. We don't, we're not actually seeing a decrease. It's going to actually result
No, it's just the billings.
We didn't have the information of the federal board bill, so we couldn't set up the receivable. So therefore, we couldn't recognize the revenue that would be due for that month.
Okay.
So there's no projected decrease. It's just timing.
To be concrete, I think the revenue, when the actual revenue comes in, it should be higher because the, you know,
Yes, the population has been up considerably.
Banning days have been higher than last year.
Okay. Next up is expenditures. And as I did with revenues, I've presented an expenditure summary by fund type. Again, I've highlighted general fund for ease of view. A month to date, we have about 19 million of expenditures and year-to-date is 31. This chart, you can see the general fund year-to-date expenditures compared to 2017. The chart does show slight decrease or compared to 2017. However, this is mainly due to a 1.27 million decrease in grant match transfers compared to last year. And again, this is another timing chain, a timing issue. I don't know if Mr. Dion wants to expand on that.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to work with the grants division. We should basically be transferring grant match as the grant requires it or we're doing billing. So we're going to do a systematic transfer quarterly. In the prior year, they did some lump sum transfers just to move the, the grant match, but it's better to leave it in the general fund that are keep earning interest. And then just move it as it's required as we draw down for state funds, we provide the county funds. So we're going to have a more systematic method of doing that so that we don't have any spikes on the expenses.
Next slide, this next slide shows a percentage of expenditures compared to the remaining general fund budget. As Mr. Dion explained and I explained before, there is a slight decrease, but it's due to that timing issue with the transfers. Lastly, this is the same chart as in the previous slide, however, it shows a breakdown by function of government. As in previous months, you can see that about 50% of our expenditures are related to the public safety function. Around 25 are related to the administration of justice. Around 20 are related to the general government and the last 5% is for all the other functions of government. Lastly, it's a fund-balanced portion of our presentation and I don't know, again, Mr. Dion has any comments on this?
We haven't really seen any major changes. I know Betsy has sent out a communication to some of the departments and I know the commissioner gets the letter from my office on sales tax. We're up a four and quarter percent on, on sales tax, which is excellent. So we're still seeing it, but I expect at some point, we're going to see a plateau. I mean, we've been anticipating a plateau for some time, but can't just keep going up, up, up. At some point, it needs to, to level off, but it's, it's, right now, it's, it's doing well. Even Hotel Motel, but Hotel Motel is very seasonal and it fluctuates. From the prior year, sometimes, you know, the receipts may come in and maybe a month out. So we see a spike right now, but it, it may come down with some lower collections and other months. Overall, but it is looking very good. The other thing, we were notified this morning, the bond refunding transaction has been completed. The county has received the $59.9 million. We'll be effectuating the transactions in the system and basically the deal was a success. Congratulations.
Annually, how much are we saving on that?
Um, what's the annual savings? The overall savings is
Total savings came in 5 and 1/2 million dollars annually over the life of the debt, a little over half a million here.
But as far as fund balance, we're still on track preliminarily for the 17th fiscal year of around 83. We have some adjustments and as we get closer, I'll, I'll try to explain those. We, we still have things in the pipeline. And the fiscal year 18, on, like I say, sales tax is up. I still see a positive trend. And I still see the potential of our reserves and, and the fund balance growing a couple of million dollars. But it's still dependent on, and we'll be looking at it month by month in case something else comes up. Any additional one-time expenses the court decides, but that's, that's within your call to make sure that you keep that, that fund balance reserve to a manageable amount.
If you have any question, I mean, additional questions? Concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Michael.
Appreciate it.
Very nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion to accept the item?
Sure. Second. Commissioner Betis.
Aye.
Commissioner Dion.
Aye.
Commissioner Staudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Higgy.
Aye.
Start the vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, section 115.021, audit and settle all accounts against the county showing the attached listing and direct payment of those accounts.
This is our last check run for the fiscal year, squeeze another one in. Some time back, I notified you based on communication with, with Betsy that all of the information is provided electronically. Commissioner Leon asked for paper and that's great. Anybody else needs paper, you just let us know. We'll make sure you get the documentation prior to the, the meeting.
Thank you ever for doing it.
I took a vote, I moved to Second. Commissioner Betis.
Aye.
Commissioner Dion.
Aye.
Commissioner Staudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Higgy.
Aye.
Let's vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And just a clarification of the savings. James just gave you an update that net present value was 5.6 million. The percentage savings of the refunding bonds was 10.4%. And the percentage of savings on the refunding was 11.17. It was a lot better than we anticipated.
That's really good.
It's great. It's really great. Thank you.
We, again, we entered the market at absolutely the right time. If you didn't make it into the market by the 15th, AG would not consider refundings. And with the change happening at the federal level, this was one of our last opportunities to do it.
Yeah, timing was perfect.
It was significant saves.
There was some stuff that was going to sell the next day. One county sale happened right to the 84, so.
And just, you would not, I am amazed at the amount of work that goes into one of those. So it's our team and the, our internal team and the, our bond council, our financial advisors, the underwriters. It's, it's unreal, the amount. I probably have more emails in it from that transaction than I do from everything else all year long. It is unreal. So great, great work on our, our team's part and our, and our financial advisor, underwriters, bond council.
Thank you for expediting that. I got to sit in and watch some of the action.
Yeah, we'll see a lot of it, yeah.
And it was very neat to see it go live online and the sale happening and where people were purchasing. And so it was, it was very interesting. So thank you for all the work we did.
10%, is probably one of the highest we've ever achieved.
It, it would mean our top two or three in the last decade or more.
Yeah, and they, they got us involved more than we've ever been involved in, in the past where we actually could see the transactions occurring to see what the underwriters were possibly going to purchase. You know, they just do that to cover, but the bottom line is it was oversold.
Which one is it?
And none of the underwriters had put any of it in their portfolios. So they were well received, well, the county basically was well received by market. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will go and take item three. Item number three, receive a presentation from the Community Services Department.
Hi, good morning, county commissioners, county judge, everybody in Suella Community Services Department. I'm here for you this morning to give you a general overview of my department and some of the things that we've been doing since our 2016 reorganization. The purpose really of the presentation is to kind of catch you up on those things. Also in light that we have a new county judge, and so I, I wanted to give a good refresher to all of you and give some status updates to our new county judge. As you know, our department and its programs were reorganized in March of 2016. What you see here in this slide is the programs that are under the umbrella of the Community Services Department. Not included in here is the Veterans Assistance Office. As you know, their reporting structure was changed by the Texas Legislature this past September. Nonetheless, the Community Services Department continues to give them support as usual. And so I'm not including an update on them because Roland Hasler, your Veterans Assistance Officer, will be providing a progress report to you next month. It's going to be a first quarter report to you, one of other quarter reports that he's going to be bringing to you every, every three to four months. I, since the department was reorganized, I want to kind of let you in that we engaged in our very first ever strategic planning session for our department. That's something that our department had never had. And we did that over a span of a week in 2016. My team helped me develop a vision and mission statement, which you see on, on the slide here before you. Our department logo, which is the upper right-hand corner. We establish department values is representative of the acronym, it's CARES, and it stands for collaboration, advocacy, responsive, empowering, and supportive. Those are words that embrace the work that the department does. We also established ethical principles that are in line with the county's expectations of ethical standards and the ethics commission standards. During this process, we also created performance goals for each program and division with specific metrics that we are now being held accountable to. Staff now has strong guiding principles by which their conduct and performance will be measured on. All of this was developed to provide a framework and a structure that was solely that key needs department. And it does set certain expectations of performance and conduct for every single person in that department. It hasn't been without challenges, as you know. But the seat has been planted and so I look forward to the continued growth and new challenges in this department. One of the first programs that I focused on when, when the program was reorganized in 2016 was a nutrition program. I made some management and personnel changes internally and then I restructured some of the internal procedures as well in the nutrition program. Also with Hopeless Guidance, our fleet director, we developed a fleet replacement plan for the program's aging vans. We have a fleet of 13 vans that have not been looked at or replaced or, or, or even see, or had maintenance plans for that matter. We did receive CEP manis since that timeframe to replace two of those vans. And so every year, we put together a CEP request to, to rotate some of those older aging vans out of, out of our fleet. The new van model that we purchased recently is, is up on your screen. It has, it's a more versatile model, it's smaller. It is better equipped to hold the cold coolers and hot pans that's required for the transport of our meals. It also is emblazoned with our new nutrition program logo. As you see there, it's bright and vibrant and catches people's eye. We also decalled the back of the van with a house mic driving sticker question with a identifying van number with the program's phone number to give citizens the opportunity to call in with concerns about the driving of our, of our vendor and also for general information and questions about our program. The program currently employs 10 total staff. Out of those 10, five are office operational staff, four are center coordinators, each responsible for overseeing five centers throughout the county. And of course, it has one program manager. We outsourced the meal service to Valley Services, Inc., who prepares, delivers, and serves anywhere between 1,600 to 2,000 meals per day in the home-delivered meal setting and throughout 20 congregate sites in El Paso. Year-to-date, as you see from the slide, we've served just a little over 72,000 meals. We're on trend to serve about 434,000 meals by the end of this fiscal year. That's approximately 36,000 meals per month. Our total program budget is just under $3 million. Out of that, 7% is county-funded. You provide general fund money to pay for staff salaries, a small operations budget such as equipment and office supplies, auto allowance for our mobile workers, and a small contingency fund that provides debt funding in the event we're short through, between vet periods or, or meal shortages. With that 7% that you provide, we're able to leverage the remaining 93% from other external funding sources from four different granting agencies, both state and federal. And we also have two contracts with Medicare managed care organizations in this community, AmeriGroup Brother and Molina Healthcare, who reimburse for meal services provided to homebound clients in their insurance program. And so we, we receive some revenue from those two insurance groups as well that support our program. Our largest funder for the home-delivered meals program is a Health and Human Services Commission which formerly that's the Department of Aging and Disability Services, as, as you've heard being referred to in the past. Over the last three years, we've seen about a 9% increase in funding from HCC to support the home-delivered meals program. It's allowed us to continue to promote that program and grow it. Unfortunately, we've seen a decrease in funding from our congregate meal program. The Area Agency on Aging funds that program through the federal government's Older Americans Act. Over the last three years, we've seen a significant reduction in funding. It approximately about $500,000 drop in funding since 2015. As a result, we've had to decrease our promotion for that setting. Some donations that we receive, we receive nominal guest fee revenues from guests who go to our congregate sites. We also help support it with some of the revenue that we receive from the managed care organizations like AmeriGroup and Molina. And the county's general fund allocation to nutrition has helped us sustain status quo service levels, but it's prevented us from continuing to grow the program. This is a congregate site, not the home-delivered meals site.
Irene, I, I mean, you may talk about this in a second. So what does that mean in terms of not having the capacity to grow? Do we have a waitlist or?
We started this past summer a short waitlist. What we're doing is we're enrolling participants when we have a vacancy in the congregate meal program. When senior participants are unfortunately committed to a nursing home or a hospice care facility or regurgitively they pass away, or they drop from the program permanently voluntarily. And so when we see a vacancy in any of our centers, in those circumstances, we're, we're able to enroll someone in that slot because that slot's already allocated for and budgeted for, and so we're able to enroll. But the trends that we're seeing in enrollment is about 250 participants per year, which amounts to about 150,000 in growth per year. That's $150,000 per year in future growth.
And Irene, if I can, how long is the waiting list? How, how many people we have on that?
It depends on, on the centers. There are some high-need centers, for example, in the Northeast. We have some high-need centers in, in, in the Mission Valley. Our Fayetteville Center has a short waitlist. They're not very long waitlists, but nonetheless, they are, they are, there are some waitlists.
And that's, and I thought it was a little bit higher than that, the total funding cost, that, I mean, the, the short, we're short. Due to the decreases in funding, we're short about approximately $200,000?
Just about. It, it, it's, it's, it's getting close to the, the 200,000. We, the cut in funding for this program is, is about 500,000. So we're able to maintain current status levels because we have some of these other revenues coming in. Again, the, the donations are small, the guest fees are small. And, but we do have some revenue that comes in from the Medicare and that comes in from the Medicare and trans groups. They pay above the price that it costs us to provide the meal, and so some of those revenues are being diverted to support status quo levels for the congregate. And as we're seeing seniors drop off from the program, we're able to enroll in those vacancies. Again, that trend is about, the growth trend is about 250 new participants per year. And so if the AAA funding trend continues to go downward, as I've been told at May in the next couple of years, you'll be seeing in budget hearings in the next coming months, requesting that you consider an increase in your general fund allocations to support the growth in this program for fiscal year 2019 and beyond. I also, I wanted to share an informational video that ITV produced for our program. We've asked ITV to put together informational videos for the entire department, and they started with nutrition first. And so that's the first video that's been complete, and I wanted to share that. It's only a couple of minutes long. It's not very long, but it's a very...
El Paso County Community Services Department has a senior nutrition program that has been operating for almost 20 years. The program is a collaboration between the county, the city of El Paso, and a private vendor with funding for the program coming from several entities. The program provides about 1,600 meals a day to seniors living in all parts of the county.
When we come in in the morning, we prepare a line, sanitize them and everything, and put our plates, and then we have a plate that's going out chilled. We have a chilled plate that is cold. And then we have a hot meal that we prepare at 8 o'clock in the morning. And from there, we start preparing for the next day.
Valley Services is the vendor that prepares two meals on a daily basis. One warm meal will be sent to be consumed the same day. Another is sent chilled and is meant to be consumed the following day.
Actually, our food vendor has a nutritionist, a licensed nutritionist. So we get together on a quarterly basis to go over the menu, and she kind of prepares everything, and then we just go over it, and we agree with her, and we go with that.
Meals are delivered directly to seniors' rooms and are also distributed to senior citizen centers operated by the city of El Paso.
We must be starting delivering on 10:30, and then we better finish before 1:30 p.m.
County resident Leo Pollo Benitez and his wife participate in the program. He says this program is helpful, and it provides them with the nutrition they need. The county operates the senior nutrition program and dedicates 10 employees to run it.
Well, our team does focus on serving love in each meal, which is something that we like to incorporate in everything that we do because we love our seniors, we love our elderly, everyone around.
To participate in the senior nutrition program, contact the El Paso County Community Services Department at phone number 915-546-8167.
Again, this is one of other videos that ITV is producing for us, for our department. It's a video that will be running in a loop in our TV display in our lobby in our building. And so that's one of the videos that I wanted to share. Before I move on from nutrition, was there any other questions from the judge or the commissioners?
Irene, do we have further east than Fiero, out into Commissioner Perez's area, and a little north of Montana, the Squaredance area? Do we have centers out there?
We have the Montana Vista Community Center. The building and the programming is run by La Fe, but we serve our noontime meals in that community center. That building is owned by the county. The operations is outsourced to La Fe, and then our nutrition program serves meals in the Montana Vista Community Center. And that's within, it's not in the Squaredance area. It's probably a mile or so eastward.
Are we experiencing growth in those areas where waiting lists perhaps are getting bigger?
I don't have a waiting list in Montana Vista and Fiero, but there is growth. I think the anticipation is when the city breaks ground under huge eastside regional complex, it's going to have recreation, and it's going to have a multipurpose center. And they've already met with me about possibly extending our nutrition program into their multipurpose center. They don't break ground for that until 2019, but we've already started those conversations. And I suspect that some of the folks going to Fiero, or possibly in Carolina, or maybe Montana Vista, will flock to that new purpose center.
And how, no, that's good news. That's real good news. How far is that, the new, the proposed center from Montana Vista?
It's actually very close to Montana Vista. The regional park from the city will be out in the outskirts, off of Montana and the Bridgebeam area, not far from the, or maybe about a quarter mile from our annex building. Our Community Development Division primarily manages a grant program funded by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Many of you don't know, in 1995, the 74th Legislature passed a legislative directive establishing Colonia Self-Help Centers along border counties. During that legislative directive, Cameron County, Willacy County, Ivanco Star Web, and El Paso County were established as Colonia Self-Help Centers, and other counties that were designated as economically distressed were also included in later legislative sessions. In that directive, five colonias within each county are identified to receive concentrated attention from this program, from its respective self-help center. Our self-help center has been administering, administering rather, that program since 1995. It operates its services out of a community resource center located in the Colonia of Awa Dulce, which is in Commissioner Perez's precinct. It's east of Horizon City, off of Horizon Boulevard in Ascension. And so it's pretty remote, but it is embedded in that colonia. That picture that you see right there is our resource center. That building was built by the community in the late 90s. It was built as a home. So every office you see inside that building is actually a bedroom with a closet. And so we're using those bedrooms as offices, and it was built as a teaching method for the community to learn how to build a home, or go back into their own home and learn how to lay tile and frame and roof. And so we're using that home as our office facility. The program's total budget is approximately $1.2 million, of which $1 million is a grant fund from the Texas Department of Housing to operate the Colonia Self-Help Center program. The program's scope is to improve the quality of life of Colonia residents in an effort to continue to promote self-sufficiency in the colonias. Activities per contract in that program include providing a community tool lending library. You see that to the left of the community resource center. We also have a technology lab that holds 20 computers with internet service and a printer that is for the public's use, free of charge, obviously. The public uses it for job searches, resume writing, general usage for accessing their email or any other social media platforms. Our technology lab is very popular in the summer, during the time when our kids are off from school. They do use our computers to play games, access YouTube. There are firewalls. ITV has done a very good job to firewall our computers, so all the content is rated PG. And ITV does a great job of cleaning up our computers to make them, to continue to make them serviceable for the community. The community resource center has two community rooms, are available to the public and the community providers to provide a range of educational programming, wellness activity programs, any other human or social service event that is in line with the program's mission. We also promote community cleanup campaigns in those colonias, in the targeted colonias. You see on the slide, year-to-date, we collected a little over 7,000 pounds of household waste. But since 2014, since the inception of the grant program, we've collected almost $1 million of household waste and several thousand tires since 2014, as well as a result of our cleanup campaigns. 80% of that grant fund that we get from the Texas Department of Housing is to support home rehabilitation and new construction home projects. This program requires us to rehabilitate eight homes and construct nine new homes from scratch, property owned by our Colonia residents that become eligible for the program. Unfortunately, we have experienced a number of setbacks in this program that has caused us delays in getting these projects off the ground. Some of those setbacks include, you know, participant apathy due to stronger grant eligibility rules in the program. We've had a hard time getting applicants to qualify within the stricter criteria of the program, whereas before, the program did not require picking up liens on the property. Now, the program does require the state put liens on properties as a condition of repair and construction, and that really puts a lot of our clients out because they don't have clean titles on their properties. And so it has really been a setback that has caused us some delays. We've also had some internal personnel challenges, some turnover, some functional challenges that have contributed to some of these delays. We've experienced some procurement delays. And generally, there's been a lack of interest from contractors to participate in these programs, where our larger home builders and contractors see this as a very minor and small program to be able to invest mobilization costs and time and effort to go to this area to build. Our smaller contractors see this as very unattainable due to the large insurance and bonding requirements that's required with the grant program. And so we're trying to find a good balance and trying to find contractors that are able to perform on these contracts. Since 2015, we've endured for these activities three separate times, using several different procurement methods. We've gone through the purchasing buy boards, the DIR. We've gone through job order contracting with the help of the purchasing department. We've not been successful in receiving any bids for this project. We've, since we've input again with purchasing, we've prepared bid specifications, and we're bidding through the, you know, the traditional competitive bid process, and the purchasing has let out recently the latest bid, and with a scheduled opening in mid-January of 2018. If we receive competitive bids, we do expect to start construction in March of 2018 to hope to be completed in June. The grant contract expires at the end of September 2018. So we are really under the gun to do this, and we're trying to get contractors on board to be able to finish these projects sometime. From this slide, you'll see some general statistics, and these are year-to-date. These are as of October until this point. We've lent out 48 tools. 56 individuals have accessed our computer lab. We've had usage of our community rooms thus far this year by Region 19 and Texas A&amp;M, who's provided some nutrition classes to the community. We have a standing activity in one of the community rooms. APCC provides GED Spanish classes to our Colonia residents year-round. We've had quite a bit of success in that program as well. And then you'll see some of our walk-in general visits from our community members to our community center.
Irene, and just one flu shot, is that what?
That's a request for a flu shot. We've had a flu shot. They come in, "Do you have a flu shot wellness program?" And so we just tally it as they come in and ask. We've had like a flu shot wellness screenings throughout the year, where Walgreens itself does, and they come to the center and they provide flu shots to our Colonia residents.
So there's been many, many forms?
Yes, there's been many. It's just that one request from a resident that came in, and they signed in and said, "I'm here asking about a flu shot." That's really what that depicts. And so that's general, what you see there. That center is right next to the new Awa Dulce Park that I believe Public Works just completed. And so we get a lot of traffic now, a lot more from our community members who are there to use our center and are also there to use the park as well. Any questions from that program? The General Assistance Program has seen probably the greatest transformation of all the programs in this department. In late 2016, I made some management changes, some procedural changes in the program. I've since made some other staffing changes in an effort to provide some efficiencies for that program. It's actually one of your strategic priorities for fiscal 2017, where you've directed me to conduct an efficiency evaluation into the program. That was completed this past August. In that analysis, I found that our program was providing duplicate services in direct competition with other community providers in the community, some of your smaller nonprofit organizations in this community. We were competing with them, applying for the same type of low-dollar grants, high-match requirement grants, to provide housing, permanent housing services to the chronically homeless in this community. These grants were written in such a way that committed the county to some high-match requirements, and enforced the program to divert some staffing resources from your routine programmatic services such as your routine mental assistance, utility assistance services, your burial program, your child welfare services. We were forced to divert some services into these other grant programs. I think we became probably the largest permanent housing provider in this community in direct competition with the other nonprofit organizations who have the expertise and the skills to do permanent housing for the chronically homeless. I also found that in 2014, when HUD first issued their Housing First Initiative and mandated that all HUD-funded communities develop and implement a coordinated entry system to place a chronically homeless in permanent housing situations, the General Assistance Program was asked by the El Paso Coalition for the Homeless to volunteer to operate this system in an interim basis while a permanent provider was identified. The General Assistance Program accepted. We diverted staffing resources to this program. We developed and paid for a telephone hotline to do these assessments for the chronically homeless, and we continue to operate the system without any further resources. Commissioners' Court was not consulted, and the body did not take a policy decision on this. Nonetheless, we did continue to operate until recently, when I completed this analysis, where we transitioned that system back to the Coalition for the Homeless, who is now operating it now while an RFP is issued and established as a new operator for the community. The same analysis identified other inefficiencies in the internal eligibility process, such as, you know, we were not making our application, our criteria, our guidelines, our checklist available to the public online or electronic. It was creating a lot of duplication amongst, duplication of duties among staff. We were having clients come in several times before we would even, you know, sit them down for an interview to determine if they were eligible. They came in to pick up the application. We send them home with the application. They came back with a slew of documents, asked for their checklist, and then we set up an appointment for them to come seven days later. And then when they came in seven days later, there was no assurance that they would be eligible, and sometimes they would be turned away, and sometimes they would become ineligible. It was, it would take approximately about 40 to 50 days before we determined eligibility for a client. By that time, they were almost already either two months in arrears from their rental or their utility assistance that they originally came for, or one month in arrears. And so, and then we were picking up the tab for that second month because we had waited so long to provide those services. So we've eliminated those processes. We're making all that available online for them. When they call, we go over all the criteria and the checklist, and then we direct them to the electronic resources so that they themselves can log in, check to see if they're eligible, so that they know, "I am, I am eligible," or "I may not be eligible," and they can determine themselves whether they're eligible. And they can determine themselves whether they want to make the trip and come over here. It's on a login basis. We don't set up appointments. They come in with all their information and we take them right there and then. We no longer make appointments for a later date. They come in and we interview them right there and then. And we let them know if they're eligible on that same day. And then we're processing those eligibility vouchers to the county auditors within seven to 10 days in the hopes that we can pay the vendor, the landlord, the utility company within a 30-day span. Those are some of the metrics that we put in place for General Assistance. And so staff needs to meet those really strict timelines. In the analysis, we also evaluated sort of like a return on investment of what was it costing you in General Assistance operations money to disperse some of these services. In the amounts that you see there, it's included the funding that the county provides as well as grant investments that we've made in 2017. So what you see in that FY17 cost of operations to services analysis, so for every dollar that you were providing in General Assistance operations, we were dispersing about $1.10 in services. That includes the money that you invest in support services for General Assistance and grants that we had in place at that time. With some staffing changes and some process automations in our eligibility criteria, we're projected to see a more efficient service with a ratio of about $1.00 cost to dispersing $1.31 cents. I want to note that the first figure, the $1.00 to $1.10, only takes into account what it costs you in General Assistance operations money. When we factor in resources that I had to divert from a different program to provide case management, to close out some of these grant guidelines and straight compliance with some of the HUD regulations, it costs you about $45,000 more in salaries and services to be able to do that. That efficiency reduces to a break-even point. And so for every dollar in 2017 that it was costing the county to provide services, we only gave $1.00 back in services. And that includes General Assistance operation and services for my care management team that I diverted to finish these grant programs.
I have a question.
Yes.
Some of my issues with some of the things that we do is we're fighting other organizations to get the grant dollars. And if it costs us $1.00 to give a dollar, should we not be in the business of trying to do this in some situations because it could cost someone else if he sends the dollars and no further? Is this something we really need to look at when we're going and doing our next planning session? If it costs us $1.00 or even $1.05 to give away a dollar and we've taken that funding from another organization that could have done cheaper, easier, quicker, do we need to reorganize and figure out this is a new issue?
Irene, if I may before you. Yes, so that's part of what, that's basically a lot of what she's been doing. And we're now narrowing down to the gaps, like what doesn't exist? What isn't available somewhere else or already being administered somewhere else? And like, what's our niche? What's our area of the market that is unmet need that we can provide? And I'll let Irene speak more to that. But that's really, that's what you all asked us to do and really what you'll see already between FY17 and FY18, we're making roads and roads there to make improvement.
And that second ratio in FY18, that's with two less grant funds. And so we're no longer competing with our smaller providers in the community. Because what we were doing is we were going after the same dollars and we were eating at their service dollars. And they were having a hard time supporting their services because the county was getting the bulk of the money. And the reason we were getting the bulk of the money was because when we were applying for these dollars, they were saying, "We don't need support services." I mean, we don't need salary dollars. We have existing resources that we can use to provide these services. And so if 100% of the money we were applying for was going towards direct services, well, smaller providers in the community, they need those salary dollars. And when they would apply for the same grant that we would, they would put in a salary for a case manager or a salary for a social worker. They weren't as competitive as a county was. And we were getting that bulk of the money and affecting their services. And they're the experts in permanent housing for chronically homeless, not our team, not our staff.
And so really... And we weren't being completely, I don't want to say we weren't, but we weren't accounting for some of the other demands to get those fundings. And that's where, like, we pulled resources from other areas because we had them to help us wrap these up and close them out, to be compliant. But we really hadn't accounted for the demand on care management, which those funding sources required.
I think that's kind of just think we need to be careful though when we're doing that because, I mean, in my opinion for the community, it's better for them to receive more direct services than overhead.
Oh, we agree, we agree. But the thing is, is so as part of those direct services, it said you had to be providing care management. We had not allocated any care management. So we weren't, the recipients were better served when they are getting the care management piece. And so with the other entities, they are saying, "This requires a care management piece and there's a cost to that." We were not accounting for that. And our care managers, we could only temporarily pull them aside for this because they're paid for by another funding source.
And they're assigned to other entities within the county by interlocal agreement. And so where we had some room, where we could assign special cases, we did that. And they helped us wrap up these grants. And that's the additional cost that the county incurred when we diverted those resources.
Irene, I just have, if I read that correctly, 329 individual entities that were not eligible. Obviously, they have some sort of need. But what is the biggest reason for not being able to assist them?
Many were high-income. And so we go by the HUD's 80% income guideline. And so depending on the family size, we look at those ratios. And so many were high-income, others were already receiving subsidized services. And so our guidelines have always had provisions where we assist clients in need that meet the income criteria but are not receiving other subsidies from other providers. For example, we have clients that come in that live in subsidized housing through the Housing Authority, through housing vouchers. The Housing Authority provides rental subsidies and utility subsidies. And what we were doing is we were denying the rental, but we were providing electric utility subsidies on top of what the Housing Authority was already providing. And many of those are that. We had a large demand in early October from some of our Housing Authority clients who didn't come for a rental subsidy, but they were coming for a utility subsidy of which they were already receiving from the Housing Authority. And with this analysis, we found that we were not being consistent with that. We were providing subsidies on top of other subsidies. And our guidelines strictly prohibit that. And so what we're doing now is we're enforcing it consistently, our guidelines for assistance. You know, it hasn't been without these challenges and some complaints and some concerns from clients. It's just because we were being inconsistent in the past. We were picking up some subsidies that we were not supposed to pick up. And it's really been an effort from staff and my team to educate the public and re-educate them about our assistance guidelines and educate our other providers in the community who refers to County General Assistance. So we don't always get funding at the same time. And so some providers, most of our nonprofit providers are in August, September, already running dry on their funding. And so they were referring folks. They know our fiscal year starts in October. We get allocations in October. And we were bombarded in October. Where we got about over 700 requests in October, we're now down to about 300 requests in November. And we're on trend with that same amount in this month as well. And so it's about re-educating the public, our providers in the community, about our assistance guidelines. It has always been to provide a one-time assistance for crisis interventions, to help families and individuals move beyond that one-time hardship. It has never been the intent to be a sustainability program. Our budget has never supported that. And so we just kind of want to get back and re-educate the public about that. And so that's why you see some of these denials. It's just that re-education from the public, or to the public, rather. Our staff makes every effort, however. If they are not eligible for our program, we have established a large number of partnerships in the community where we're able to call and often do a one-handoff. I have a client here who did not qualify for ours, but I see that you have a program that perhaps they may be eligible in. And we give a contact and that one-handoff and the client goes off to that provider. And so we try never to send them, just go to Project Bravo without knowing that Project Bravo has funding or not. And so we try to do that so they don't always, they may not be eligible for our program, but we make every effort to connect them to other providers that do. And we're making connections to workforce development programs as well for them to help them underway to a self-sufficiency life. So you see our current statistics as of November 30th. We've assisted 104 families. We have denied 329 individuals for the various reasons that I've explained to you. The majority of our assistance is for rent. We provided only one mortgage assistance. Our guidelines only allow, if you're eligible, we only pay up to $700 for rent or mortgage. If you qualify, we ask the client then to bring the difference through check or money order. We combine that, turn it over to the auditor's office. The auditor's office issues one check to the mortgage company or the landlord or the utility company. We don't give the money to the client. We pay directly to the vendors. The utility electric assistance is through a project care program from the electric company. And I understand it's from interest payments from a large settlement to the electric company. So that doesn't affect your general fund. We typically pay all electric requests through that special fund. If we're running low at the end of the fiscal year, we'll tap in a little bit through the general fund and there's money left over. And then the other utility assistance. And you provide a budget for the individual burial programs. And that's where you see the 14 burials so far this year. As we continue to move forward with our current staffing levels, we are also expected to launch a new case management software that's going to go live around February or March of next year. That software will further automate any other existing manual processes that we may have. I do expect to achieve greater efficiencies in 2019 and beyond as we launch with that software system next year as well. Any other questions before I move on from that program? And finally, but certainly not least, I wanted to provide you a brief overview of the department's care management team. The Behavioral Health Support Services Division is a restructured program. It was formerly the Mental Health Support Services Department. It was merged and restructured under the Community Services Department and it was made as a division in the program of our department. It is staffed with three care managers, rather, and one of those is a supervisor. Two of those care managers are assigned to the Juvenile Probation Department, providing services to the youth and their families in the SHOCAP and the ISP programs for JPD. Those are our most intensive programs, our most higher-risk of recidivism in our offender programs for JPD. That's where our care managers are assigned to. A third care manager was added last year to my staffing table, assigned to provide services to Judge Perro's Veterans Treatment Court. The services of all those care managers are provided, are intensive case management services. They're very personal, tailored to the individual clients and their family's needs. And the premise of providing those type of services is to ensure that the client's home and home life and support system is stable so that the client has the greatest chance of a successful outcome and obviously to not recidivate back into the system. Most of these services are provided at the client's home with their support system and in collaboration with other services and other treatment teams, such as their counselors and obviously their supervisory compliance and probation officers as well. They're provided in their homes during a time that's convenient for the family and the client so as not to disrupt any of their life, school, or work life, for that matter. And just briefly from the slide, you can see some of the active cases that we have right now. Each of our care managers carries about an average caseload of 11 cases. And they're capable of supporting up to 20 cases at any given time. Some of the things that our care managers do in addition to providing these services to our clients, they secure donations from private and local corporate donors to assist families under our care and individuals under our care. In fiscal year 17, we received approximately $13,000 in donated items and cash from a number of private and corporate donors locally. This year, year-to-date, we've received about $4,000 in donations in cash, clothing, furniture, and a number of other items from five different donors in the last two months. These donations help the department's clothing closet. We have a clothing closet for all our clients in all our programs. They come in for general assistance services or nutrition services or any other services. And we have a clothing closet for them to access. If we know a mom and dad needs to go to an interview, we have that for them. These donations have enabled us to provide holiday meals for the families under our care. And we've also organized this year a clothing giveaway fest for the public. We set up tables with a lot of our donated clothes and items in our building. And we invited the public to come and pick items from our shared fest. These donations also supported back-to-school supply efforts for all the youth under the care of our care managers with JPD. So in a nutshell, those are all the programs I wanted to give you an overview of. We do continue to have some challenges and we're moving ahead with those. Before I close though, however, I did want to share that the transformation for this department obviously has had its fair share of challenges. But I want to tell you that it's been the best challenge and the most gratifying of my career. I've been with the county for 17 years in different capacities and this has been the most gratifying of my career here with the county. There are growing pains. I see them as growing pains because we've had to reinvent ourselves. We really have to start from scratch. I do want to say that, you know, I've had a lot of great support from Betsy, now Joel. But I want to thank you the most for giving me the opportunity and trusting me with this department, having that faith and that confidence in me to be able to move this department forward. So I want to thank you, the board, for giving me that support as well. I continue to look forward to more positive changes to come. And so I want to thank you for that. And I'll entertain any other questions they can make.
I just had a real quick question. On the Behavioral Health Support Services. What is a closed case? I mean, how do you get to a closed case? What?
Each case, our care managers develop an individual's care plan for our youth and the families. And so we develop specific goals that we want our youth to be. And these are not the goals that, for example, their probation officer may have. Their probation officer may have goals of, "Don't do drugs," or "Don't be truant." Our goals are more life-based, based on the basic life domains. You know, be a good steward in your community. Make positive friendships in school. Those are goals that we set out for the youth. Then we have specific life domain goals for their families, for mom and dad, or just mom, or grandma and grandpa, whoever has custodial guardianship of our youth. Those goals are, if you don't have a job, then we're going to work to get you to a place where you can get a job. Or you need more educational training, we're going to connect you to those services where you can get that training. And general goals for family may be getting them therapy. Many of our families need, they come from an abused relationship. And so we do those. So those are, you know, smaller goals that we tend to place for the families. Once, you know, as the case is ongoing and we're doing our home visits, we're checking out to see if they're meeting those specific goals. And that determines successful case closure. We may have... goals. And that determines successful case closure. We may have all our goals met for our specific care plan for the youth and the family, but they're still, they still haven't met their punitive goals that perhaps the probation officer or the court hasn't. And so, we may still even close our case, but continue to carry them until the end of their case through the juvenile court system ends.
And what, and what kind of like metrics and tracking do you use to, to monitor whether there is more recidivism or less recidivism among the people that you serve?
Okay, so JPD monitors all that for, for the youth. Last year, they got evaluated from UTEP, they, they received, they had an analysis done from UTEP that tracked and monitored the services that were provided through our care management team versus a control group that didn't get case management. And that evaluation indicated and demonstrated that the youth that received services and the follow-through home visits and care management were successful and did not recidivate. As of last year, we had zero JPD youth that came back into the system that were under the care management care. And so, JPD continues to evaluate that and, and to, and to make sure that our services are working. And then we continue to improve on our services, so that we can ensure that our youth don't recidivate, or don't fall into the cracks where they may have to be sent to a residential treatment program. That really was the intent of this, of this program to begin with. And so, those are things that we're working on to improve. We're trying to put together more youth camps for our youth, you know, giving them more of leadership skills, and empowering them, self-esteem classes. We do parenting classes with the parents of our youth, once a week, every night. We provide mental health safety training to some of our foster parents. So there, there's a lot of, of work that goes behind to ensure that, that we're meeting some of these, some of these goals.
You, you may have said this, but I don't remember. What's the, what's the, the amount of time, the average amount of time that like, when you get a case to when you close a case? What, how long does it take?
Um, it averages about six months. Six months from the moment we get the case to the mo, to the moment that we close it. At times, we can stretch it out to about eight months, depending on our, what, what's going on from the court system on the juvenile side. But typically, our case closure is averaged about a six month.
One last, one last question. What, of, of, of all these, are these all juveniles? Or what's, what's the percentage of juveniles and the percentage of adults?
Well, we, we have our two care managers assigned to JPD deal with juveniles only. But we have one case manager that's assigned to the veteran treatment court, and he carries about, I think he has a caseload of about 13 at this point. The treatment court has about 53 to 55 clients at every, at every given moment, but only, not all of them require intensive case management. And so, the majority of our cases are youth. Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate the very in-depth analysis of all the work that you've been doing in the department. I know that it has been even uphill, a lot of battle, but clearly, the work that you've been doing will reap rewards for not only your team, but for the county, and I think we're really excited to see what the outcomes will be of all this analysis.
That's a big improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We have a few partners here for our executive session item, and I know I've been waiting for quite some time, so I apologize. So we're gonna go ahead and take the executive session item up now, and then vote on the corresponding regular session item.
Item number 11, executive session. Commissioner's Court will not recess into executive session to discuss item 11A, discuss financial information, economic development negotiations, proceed from business perspective. Regarding the agreement agreement with Project LEAF pursuant to Texas Government Code 651.087, Commissioner's Court will reconvene to take official action.
All county offices will be closed on Monday, December the 25th, through Tuesday, December the 26th, in observance of the Christmas holiday. All offices will reopen on Wednesday, December the 27th. All county offices will be closed Monday, January 1st, and Tuesday, January 2nd, in observance of the New Year's holiday. All offices will reopen on Wednesday, January the 3rd.
You can now watch Commissioner's Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County Texans. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner, located at 4690 Trends Mountain Road. Every week, he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contract in return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coastthenumber2coastrx.com. Happy savings.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at
So, I'm sorry, this, this fell under the quality jobs requirement? Because of the, I'm sorry, and is it, I'm trying to remember, the, the new policy, the number of jobs with the wages, or the?
Yeah, 30,000 or something.
Okay, oh, we're live, okay.
Are we, we're not?
No.
No, that's fine. But we're live. That, that's, that's fine.
Are we, are we open now?
We'll, we'll get you.
Yes.
Yes?
Oh, it's just used.
Can you flip the switch away, please?
Commissioner's Court has reconvened into special open session. Item number 12, approve and authorize the county judge to sign a 381 economic development agreement with South Shore USA, contract number 2017-0909.
And before we get started, I wanna thank you, Luz Estrella Castillo Dunas, thank you for being here with us this afternoon. I know that you had to wait a little bit, but thank you. You're the financial controller for South Shore USA here in the region, and so we're excited to have you here. And also with us is Mr. Tony Rodriguez with Border Plex. So thank you for being here as well.
Commissioner Jose Quinones of Economic Development, the department recommends approval to sign a 10-year, 75% rebate with South Shore USA, who would spend its operations here in El Paso. The maximum rebate amount will be under $60,613.
And it would be to sign the 381 agreement with South Shore USA.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dale.
Aye.
Commissioner Stapp.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Bullock.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Do you like to say she works?
Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to return the business in, in the region, in the county of El Paso. I believe South Shore is an incredible company. I was sharing some comments with Mr. Ramirez in the break. And I believe it, it's gonna be very helpful for the region, and also for the logistic matters. El Paso is a very important location for all the manufacturing plants located in, in Mexico and Juarez. We do have a plant, manufacturing plant in Juarez, and it's an incredible synergy between the two, two sister cities. Thank you so much for supporting those kind of businesses that will help many families. Thank you so much.
We look forward to you continuing to grow and expand, and hopefully here in El Paso.
Yes, I hope that someday, each one of you have a furniture of South Shore in their homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Ramirez, did you wanna add anything?
No, Judge. Thank you and the court's support today, and for helping process of the, thank you.
Thank you for the patience. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you and happy holidays.
Likewise.
Thank you. Thank you.
Judge, would you like to vote, Judge?
Aye.
Item number four, receive a criminal justice assessment report and a general assistance efficiency report, and discuss recommendations from your organization.
Good afternoon, Joel.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Judge. I am Joel Bishop with County Admin, Justice and Community Services, Executive Director. Thank you. I'm pleased to be here today to present an overview in line with our strategic plan for the criminal justice assessment report recommendation, that was 18POA, along with the general assistance that you, I, I will just touch again on the general assistance strategic plan that, that I have 18FS 19, Irene just touched on, because it overlaps with this. I wanna talk a little bit about that overlap, and also our work with the Sheriff's Department, as I make some recommendations. And also, before I get into this, I want to just acknowledge that this assessment was, was certainly not done, I don't wanna call this my assessment, it was a very collaborative assessment of, of the current state of, of the CJC. I spoke, I've spoken extensively with the stakeholders involved in that, and a general overview, and these recommendations are certainly not done in the box yet, with the support of the Sheriff's Department. I know they were here earlier to show their support, thinking that this would be earlier. I met with them as recently as yesterday about this item. So, I, I wanted to thank everyone involved. I also wanna thank the Commissioners again, and the Commissioner's Court for, for this opportunity, and the work that you did before I got here to set this up well, I think, for, for future success. I, I remain excited and optimistic about this department. What I, what I wanna give you is a, is a general, a general assistance efficiency, I'm gonna review that briefly, because it ties into this, and some CJC updates and recommendations. Now this, the recommendations you're gonna see are budget neutral, so they are within the So they are within the realm of FSC to approve. It ties into the strategic plans. We thought it was very important to brief you on this strategic plan item. And we will talk about the budget impact. Again, you heard from Irene on the efficiency evaluation done from general assistance. One of the reasons that they are able to, that they've been able to give you that general efficiency from the $10 to the $31 per dollar dispersed is because of some of the movement that's gone on with this plan from some positions from general assistance to the CJC. And I'll talk about that as we get into the budget. Here are my evaluation and some recommendations regarding the CJC that tie into the restructure and a few enhancements that I'd like to see within the department. I want to implement an integrated El Paso pretrial services report. And this report won't just be a risk assessment, although it will include the risk assessment. It's going to include a summary of the defendant's criminal history. I've mentioned this before, but this is going to help the pretrial justice system, not just at the pre-mag or the pre-bond hearings and the magistrate hearings, but all the way through the process, all the stakeholders, the defense, the prosecutors, the judge will be able to access the summary of the defendant's criminal history, which is critical information when making a bond decision. Other critical defendant information will also be included on this report, including employment history, community ties, those kind of things that surround this empirical evidence-based risk assessment that we will be moving more and more towards implementing and validating. We want to provide this information again to all of the stakeholders involved in these decisions. We've been working diligently with the judges and now we've expanded the stakeholders group as recently as yesterday. We met on a risk-based continuum. This is a supervision continuum that will be designed to channel our precious resources into that higher-risk, higher stakes crimes-type individuals and maybe take less of our resources out of those lower-risk, that lower-risk group. And I'll show you our progress on that here in a minute. We want to expand the amount of pretrial reports and risk assessments we need on defendants with this plan. Currently, we are doing what we committed to doing at the beginning, but there is more of a group that could be assessed in that process. And we want to expand that and put more resources to that front-end risk assessment. We want to engage in a research study on the current pretrial risk assessment. And that is, the talks have already been in progress. We have a data structure format that is in place to begin the data collection for this risk assessment. And also, maybe at the same time, validating a mental health risk assessment. I didn't put that on here, but that is definitely an option. We have motivated researchers who would like to engage in that project as well. And that would be like a mental health screen. We want to create a jail population analysis-type team. So this is, when you think of a pretrial services agency, as you hear the national best practice, the purpose of these agencies is to enhance public safety, providing that risk information, criminal history information, and supervision elements to enhance court appearance rates for making sure that defendants show up to court at the highest rate possible and to track that data and to enhance the efficient, effective, and legal use of our jails. And I know that that's a high priority. That's another strategic plan item, 18FS 6, that needs to be addressed. So part of this realignment will also address that where we'll have at least two or three staff focusing every day on who's in the jail, why they're there, with recommendations on if we think that there's, those individuals need to be addressed with this. We want to create a collaboratively-approved violation response guide. If a defendant violates a bond condition while they're out, we want to have a response guide that ties into their risk that's approved collaboratively. Right now, it's kind of a one-size-fits-all. There's no real guidelines in place. So the response is very, you know, if there's one violation, it goes to the court. We want to get more of a strategy involved in that. We want to strengthen the leadership structure in the CJC, which I'll show you here in a minute. And we want to create a data collection team in accordance with best practices in pretrial justice. So this is, we know that one of the concerns is the data tracking. It certainly is on a national level. Everybody struggles with this. Part of my proposal here that we've come up with is to add an additional data analyst to the structure of the CJC. So that is the general overview of the recommendations. I wanted to show you the work that the judges have done. And the judges have been very good to work with on this project when we're considering, how would a risk-based continuum look? How would we determine a level of supervision? We do have a draft done and this is the concept that you see on the board that we've been working on. More recently, even yesterday, Commissioner Hagerty was involved and others, the defense and the prosecutor showed up and they weighed in on this. So the concept is progressing. I think the timing, everything's lining up right now. What you see here is an analysis of the empirical risk levels on the left side of the screen. And then you're going to see on the most serious crime types to maybe the least serious crime types that the judges have identified. So we want to scrutinize more heavily those charged with more serious crimes who are in those higher-risk categories. Then we want to channel the county's resources into really hyperfocusing on those groups and laying off the less risky, less serious type of crimes. So that's the concept here. And it's been, we've done this successfully in other jurisdictions. And this would be adjusted based on the data analysis that comes out periodically. We would set time to review with our stakeholders, the data from each one of those cells. So the primary impacts we're going to see from this recommendation, it's going to significantly enhance the CJC services. You will see a significant enhancement on the front-end, the quality and level of information that stakeholders are going to receive. The quality of supervision will be improved. It also, this remains budget neutral overall to the county, which is a positive thing. I'm not here to ask you for more money to do this. And it provides a structured leadership to the department that I think is needed in some of these areas for a number of reasons. But, so more front-end resources are going to enhance that information. I mentioned that. But the information should be available throughout the pretrial process. At the click of a button, we want to put that in Odyssey so they have that, all the stakeholders have that pretrial services report. We want to, again, realign the supervision to fit the critical needs and in accordance with best practices and create that jail evaluation and that support and structure for more robust data analysis. So that's where you're going to get a big impact from this realignment. So again, in review of what personnel of realignment would look like, the department as a whole, we go from 44 staff to 42. But you would see an enhancement overall in more of a leadership structure and more front-end resources. And this is where our work with the Sheriff's Department is very important and Community Services. And we would have more supervision, more working supervisors. So we go from two supervisors to four. We create two managers to oversee the jail division and the supervision division. And a high-level data tracking analyst. That would be an important piece to the CJC director. When we talk about realigning Sheriff's Department resources, I've mentioned this to you before, but there's 12 positions, clerical-type positions that work on the second floor in the jail. We are, my proposal is to turn seven of those back over to the Sheriff's Department and to keep five for the CJC, which would help support that jail evaluation unit to do that daily jail analysis. So those staff would move into a 24/7 type shift eventually. We have worked closely with the Sheriff's Department on this and we want to make sure that this transition works well for them. So I think we're all on the same page with this structure. Most of the duties in that unit are really clerical duties for the Sheriff's Department. I think it would be better overseen by their department. So the overall recommendation saves about $50,000 in current county budget resources. And I would like to earmark that savings for potential, if in case a potential need arises, particularly with the EPSO, they need any more support there. But we will, I want to earmark that and tag that in case a need arises during this realignment process. It would increase the EPSO budget by approximately $326,000 by moving those seven positions back under their oversight. Community Services had positions they were going to cut. So this is where this ties into the efficiency improvements that you saw with Community Services. They were going to eliminate a number of positions in addition to four positions that they were going to eliminate for those that you saw improve the efficiencies there. There were also three counselor positions that we found that probably should have been eliminated over a year ago, but they were still in the budget. These funds were already budgeted. So that actually wound up helping the budget situation, even though they should have been taken off earlier. So between those seven positions that were basically dissipating, we were able to use that to fill in the gaps for those, particularly the front-end resources needs that are at the CJC, even though we're giving seven positions back to the EPSO. We created these new positions through that structure from Community Services after their efficiency evaluation. It will increase the, even though we're dropping two positions in the CJC, it will increase the CJC budget by about $53,000 due to the higher-level leadership structure that we're proposing.
And adding the data analyst.
And adding, yes, and adding a data analyst. So overall, that's the overview. I know that I did that fairly quickly. It's something that's been a very complex process. It's taken a lot of complex analysis. But I am very optimistic that with this realignment, we'll be able to enhance what's already been done and the good work of the county. I can't emphasize enough that how much I agree from a best practice standpoint, even before I came here, when I looked at what the decisions you had made to structure a county department, an independent county department to oversee the pretrial services of the county. That's a good move. I think there was a lot of good work that was done in the process. I know Sidney Miller was a big help and historically in helping me understand this as many of you have been and others that I've looked at. LC West and Frank Rios were very helpful in the budget and position analysis as well. And I wanted to acknowledge their help. But overall, this is, I'm willing to answer any questions you may have. But it's been a fun process. I love doing this kind of thing and I feel very privileged to be here, especially with a palette that I think is just going to really wind up being a very nice pretrial services model, I think, that could be used in other places or that will be used in the future. That's how I see the future of El Paso Pretrial Services.
Well, we love that you love doing this. It helps us all. And I've heard nothing but positive feedback from the judiciary on your collaboration with them and outside agencies from the Paso del Norte Health Foundation, the Sheriff's Department. So they cannot sing enough praises for the work that you and your team are doing. They are very excited about the collaboration and the next steps forward.
Thank you.
Joel, thank you. Great presentation. We touched on it a little bit last week. This program dovetails and works with the DIMC program because, as you know, it's a 24-hour-a-day program that probably should be working with us.
Yes, Commissioner, that's correct. It does work, they do work hand-in-hand, Commissioner. As a matter of fact, the staff that works 24 hours at the jail actually receives an email produced by the District Attorney's Office to be advising of individuals that are coming to the jail for them to evaluate and prepare risk assessments for them. So they get them in advance so that the staff has them prepared and ready prior to them coming in.
So you have information that's indicating that this case is going forward as opposed to spending a lot of time that's not going to go anywhere?
That's correct, for sure. It's basically telling us individuals are coming to get booked into your downtown facility and it gives our staff amount of time to prepare their paperwork that they need in prior to coming in.
That's good. And just one more thing, Joel. The $53,680 increase, is that over and above the $50,000 savings?
No, no. That would be, that's just an adjustment between the department budgets. So no, the 50 savings is on top of that. The $50,000 in savings is the overall savings to the county budget. The $53,000 is an increase to the CJC budget.
And while we're looking at budget fiscal, and this is a prospective proposal, so this is separate and apart from the salary savings we discussed this morning on item number three.
I also wanted to thank Tom. Tom's been done a tremendous job in his leadership there in the CJC right now. And he is the, really the ground-level supervisor there for the department on both sides. And he's done a great job of that. And I think Tom wore a beard here today.
Thank you.
I just want to, I just want to thank you. It's been easy for me to understand all of this because of the communication that you have with each of our offices. I think that really helps. You know, the monthly meetings that we have where, I mean, this, you know, has been, you've been talking to us about this over the last months. And so, you know, we all understand coming in today exactly what's going on. I mean, it's important this presentation is brought so that the public can see it. But I think just the level of communication that you have with my office and I'm sure with everybody else's offices, I'm very grateful for that.
Thank you.
I agree. The meeting yesterday with magistrate judges, district attorney, all defenders, everybody in the room, everybody, you can tell we're working together and trying to move forward. Really makes it easier when all the parties are at the table. And I think a lot of good things are going to come out of this. It's good work.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate your participation, your interest in this as well. I was always, I was amazed in other jurisdictions how much unity that even though you haven't had the serial parties, like the public defender, DAs, coming in the room together, you expect a lot of fighting and arguing over it. But because there is so much unity in the concepts of enhancing public safety, enhancing court appearance rates, and everybody wants to enhance the efficient, effective use of the jail, it's like we all have the same goal. And you see this as a common thread. This isn't, this issue is a national issue. It's a state issue and it's definitely a local issue as well. So it's really neat to see everybody work together the way they are. So I appreciate all of your involvement and also inviting me in and allowing me to give you those opinions. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, thank you. Good afternoon.
Item number nine, receive a presentation on the Business Retention and Expansion Plan from the Economic Development Department.
Mr. is really quick.
I'm not used to breaking. Do people need to have a bathroom break?
I do.
Health break. Take a five-minute health break.
Commissioners Court will recess for five minutes.
All county offices will be closed on Monday, December the 25th through Tuesday, December the 26th, in observance of the Christmas holiday. All offices will reopen on Wednesday, December the 27th. All county offices will be closed Monday, January 1st and Tuesday, January 2nd, in observance of the New Year's holiday. All offices will reopen on Wednesday, January 3rd.
You can now watch Commissioner's Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http colon forward slash forward slash www dot epcounty dot com forward slash budget forward slash financial recovery dot h t m to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
Well, the speeches were safe.
Commissioner's Court has reconvened into special open session. Item number nine is to receive a presentation on the business retention and expansion plan from the Economic Development Department.
That item will be postponed.
Okay.
And the part of the reason, let me just explain, we did upload the backup, but for some reason it wasn't made public and so you all haven't seen the information. It's now available out there. We want you all to have an opportunity to look at it before we ask you for input on it. So we'll put it back on to give you an opportunity to have plenty of chance to review it before you give input to us on that plan. This is one of our strategic goals as well, so we do want to get it to you.
Mr. Quinones just asked for it to be on the meeting at eight, so we'll have it on regular meeting in January. Okay, all right. So no action on item number nine. This brings us to item number eight, receive an updated presentation on the county of El Paso homestead exemptions and provide staff with direction.
We have homestead exemptions, any questions? No. Okay.
Quit declaring it, we'll be fine.
So we, you, at our last meeting that we had where we discussed homestead exemptions, there were some additional questions that the court asked for information on. The ones I'm going to go over today, it'll be brief, is, is the amount per se are fixed? What is the overall impact and effect on seniors? What's the overall impact of the exemption? I'll give this answer summarily upfront. As we choose to increase exemptions, there is a direct correlation to increases in the calculated effective tax rate. That's just as calculated. Likewise, as we decrease exemptions because of, of truth in taxation, the tax rate would decrease as well in direct proportion to generate the same amount of tax revenue dollars as the prior tax year. Lastly, we have the ratio of residential to commercial and some comparisons. We did make one change on county comparisons. We did discover that the information we got from Dallas was incomplete, so you will see some dashes on one of the slides that were not what we emailed you last week. As far as the statutes required, additional required, the amount set by an entity is a percentage. If the percentage that any entity proposes generates less of, less than $5,000 at an exemption, the bottom amount and the minimum you can give as an exemption is $5,000. So we are, and I'll give you the comparison on there. Overall seniors affected, the homestead count, El Paso County, you'll see is at the second from the bottom at 156,000. There's certainly a correlation to the number of properties, to the number of homestead vacants, but interestingly enough, 40% of your top 10 counties do not offer homestead exemptions. Overall count on seniors, El Paso is just under 46,000 seniors total properties for 2016 as far as taxable properties and parcels, 415,000. The last column is, and that's, this is the one I mentioned to you, we zeroed out that, that comparison because we did not have the other category. But comparing residential to commercial to all other properties, El Paso's residential is at 57%, commercials at 24, other properties at 19. We're probably on the lower end of the averages. As you, as you can see, most of the other counties are in that low to mid 60 percentile of residential to commercial. We have a lot of, of other categories. When we did this, we just looked for the categorization of everything that's defined as residential and just the main commercial and commercial personal property.
Well, is other like governmental properties or what?
So the other categories are actually quite numerous. I brought, I brought with me the state's property tax codes. So what's going in the others? Vacant lots, vacant land, miscellaneous, non, non-agriculture acreage, farm and ranch, industrial, mineral, lots of utilities, electric, water, gas, phone, railroads, pipelines, rolling stock, intangible, commercial aircraft, and special inventory tax, and then non-exempt, uh, tax exempt. So those all went into the other category. Comparison wise, we're, uh, talking about the overall impact of exemptions. El Paso County, as I mentioned, is at 5,000. We, other counties that are out there, Collins at 5% with a minimum of 5,000, about 40% of the counties are at a 20% exemption and several of the counties at zero. Overall, we provide over 65 exemptions up to $20,000, disabled up to 20, and then for your veterans, it varies on the percentage of your disability from, from 10 to up to 100% disability. County comparisons, El Paso County, now this is off the 2000, this is what we had available, it's most readily, I can, I actually just got the last of the 17 data in recently, so I can update this and send it for, for 2017 certified. For the 2016 certified, El Paso County, second from the bottom at just under 39 billion. I can tell you that 2017, we went up to just over, over $40 billion. Homestead exemptions, as I mentioned, several counties provide zero, we're at $5,000 comparatives of our general fund tax rate and general fund budgets. As far as homestead counts, three-year comparison, El Paso's on the, on the last one on here. We are at a, 2002, two years ago, we were at 155,000 homestead exemptions as of last tax, the current tax year we're in, we're up to 156,000. Just for your information, the 2016 exemption total was just under, just over three quarters of a billion dollars in exemptions. As I mentioned, as we raise that exemption, the rate will go up. As we lower the exemption, the, the calculated effective tax rate would go down. The choice you make on what rate to levy is all dependent on our, our budget, what budget changes we make in alignment with our county strategies. I did take one other stab to give you, and it's not on the PowerPoint, but the staff put it together for me this morning, and that is last year we had about $800 million worth of new property growth, so I wanted to see what's the blend on that. And so our new property growth last year of 840 million on market value, 68% of that growth in value was residential, 32% of that growth was commercial. So then I looked at the data we had available, six of the 10 counties had given us new market value growth in those same categories. And, and of those counties, which include Bear, Travis, Collin, Hidalgo, El Paso, and Denton, and I'll send this worksheet to you, the six county average was 69% on residential, new added value to the role, 31% was commercial. So we were just 1% away on both those categories, interestingly enough. So at least from a, from a current standpoint, our new growth was pretty close to in alignment with other, other counties in the state, six out of 10. Wasn't looking for action today, but I wanted to find out, does the court have any other details, information they would like to get? As we enter the tax cycle and we enter the budget cycle, we will, we'll give you our, our first budget presentation after strategic planning in January. We'll do our first budget overview and recommendations in February. So if we were to contemplate changing the residential homestead exemption in any direction, we do need to take action on that. The statutory requirement is that we have to do that by July 15th are my recommendations. If we did make any changes, we do that during the month, you know, later than the month of June. But I'd really like to see what the strategic plan and what our prior fiscal priorities are going to be so we can let you know what the potential impact is of any proposed or foreseen changes to the exemptions.
Well, I saw everything from zero. Some counties in Hidalgo, I think, was 25,000?
Yes, sir. So some will set a percentage, but say, a percentage, but we want a minimum of X. So it's, it's across the board. The 30 to 40% are zero, 30, 40% we're at a very large on homestead. So we're, we're on the, the top 10 counties, probably on the, sort of in the middle if you think the zeros into consideration. That was, this one here? Yeah. Questions and information you'd like to get, receive?
When, when we had this discussion in, in May, I remember it was a pretty robust discussion regarding the, the exemptions and whether or not we should extend or expand the exemptions that we had. I mean, was it known back then that we had a, an exemption for seniors? Because I, I reviewed the, the tape and I, and I felt that that was one of the, I think what, what some, and I, I know I was advocating for, I guess it's the homestead exemption for seniors and, and there was a debate over whether we should do that and whether or not that poses a burden on existing property owners by, by offering one class of residents a homestead exemption versus another. And then I was actually, I was unaware that we had already existing a $20,000 exemption.
A, a general over 65 exemption? I don't, I don't recall if it was presented or not. I don't remember talking my head out back and watching.
Well, it's okay, because, because I mean, I think it's, I think, I think for now, looking at this, I think the exemptions that we have, I mean, where it stands is, is fine. As, as I mentioned to the, to the court on, regarding the, I, I think there's going to be issues with the Central Appraisal District. If you can bring up the, the list of evaluations. I really think that this is a, a very serious problem and, and if anything, I guess I would appreciate it if perhaps the court can, can provide direction. A, a lot of the information provided in these slides are, are very helpful. But see, if, if you look at El Paso, so if you, you know, we're, we're countywide jurisdiction, it's only us, UMC and Community College that have this countywide jurisdiction. So when you add up all of our, our residential and commercial valuations, it only comes out to 38.9 billion. When you look at Hidalgo, a county that's almost exactly the same size in population, but is much more rural in composition, they don't have the industry that we have, they don't have Fort Bliss, they don't have, I mean, it's not what you would consider sort of like an, I would say, an urbanized county. The fact that they have valuations that are higher than us just really tells me that something is, is not right. Just, just, I can't, I can't say exactly what, but I, I just can't see how it is possible that Hidalgo County, now, now I guess in the other slide you showed how many properties they have, or the homestead counts, or, right, did you?
These are the homestead counts, the taxable properties I have over here.
See, they, they have fewer taxable.
Yeah, this is a very telling slide.
So they have, so, so I want to just point to the court to some, some pertinent, so they have fewer taxable properties than we do, yet our total valuation is less. It just makes no sense to me and, and which is why I think that, I mean, I, as a board member of the Central Appraisal District, I'm, I'm certainly going to look into it, but I think also us as, as a taxing entity need to be concerned about this as well because it just really seems off. And it certainly affects our tax rate, it affects, you know, how much it is we levy and how much we're able to, to, to assess in taxes. If you go back to the other slide again, that showed the valuations. You know, I, I often use Bear County as, as an example because, you know, Bear County, and while yes, it's, it has the Alamo, it has the Riverwalk and all these things and Six Flags, you know, Bear County is only twice our population. You know, they have a population of 1.6 million, you know, they have, granted, they have more taxable properties it is than we do, but the fact that they are quadruple our property tax base is, it just is, is of serious concern and I, I just, I know that they, they have more, but it just, being quadruple where we are despite being, having double our population, again, just, it seems, again, that our valuation is, is, is low. When you look at other counties that are smaller than us, Denton and Fort Bend, you know, the fact that they have almost double our valuation just doesn't seem, doesn't seem right to me. you know, the fact that they have almost double our valuation just doesn't seem, doesn't seem right to me. So I guess if there is any direction, I guess, you know, so I think that's a problem that needs to be addressed before we really start, you know, having any sort of further conversations, I guess, on homestead exemptions. Because since that's the foundation of virtually everything it is we do. And you can see how lopsided our tax, look at how much higher our tax rate is in comparison to other taxing entities. You know, Bear County's at 29 cents, Travis is at 38 cents, Tarrant is at 25 cents. And a lot of that stems from Dallas at 24, stems from the fact that they have a much larger certified property value. And again, that's why I think on the whole, our taxes as a county, as a city, school, you know, that they have to levy more or have a higher tax rate to levy more in taxes. This information is very helpful, so if, but perhaps maybe just giving staff general direction is that as we, I guess, as I, as a board member of the Central Appraisal District, start looking into, you know, I have to walk a fine line. You can't really tell them how to appraise, you know, but just making sure that they have the proper tools. But we're certainly going to be, at least I'm going to certainly ask for more accountability measures as I appreciate staff's assistance in that, in providing information such as this and where perhaps we as an entity should be approaching CAD and asking some questions. I know that there's a lot of issues pertaining to, you know, vacant land that is often appraised, you know, on the books, it's virtually nothing. But yet it sells for millions of dollars, you know, and those are issues that I think that we need to look at. It's been very difficult to look at this individually because it requires just so much research. I don't want to certainly impose a burden on staff. But since, you know, you work with the tax sheets every year, you know, and it's something that you calculate every year, that perhaps staff can provide assistance in that as, like I said, as more of a taxing entity point of view. Because I think we as an entity should be very concerned with the low valuation. And I don't think there's any entity out there that's really asking hard questions, whether the Central Appraisal District or whoever, as to why or whether or not that's really where, that's accurate. And it's.
This is one who deals in real estate every day. I think it's not so much, I think there's definitely some issues with that. There's a lot of times we're over evaluating the properties, quite a lot. I think it all stems down to what the Baseball Association talked about today and the fact that one in five people have a college degree or better. We're one of the lowest income, have the lowest incomes in this far as cities. You know, until our education systems get better and do a better job of giving people better, better graduation rates, we're not going to have the high-end properties. And I think that's more of the problem. I mean, there's, I, you can call it privilege if you want, but I have to pay a lot of property taxes every year. A lot of my property taxes are way over. I could not sell them for what I'm taxed at. Now, a lot of them are right, a lot of them are wrong. But you sit there and say, we just need to raise everybody's property values.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not saying that. I think there are the discrepancies that you're describing that I think that where there's some that are overvalued and some that are undervalued is precisely what needs to be addressed. I think when you look at Hidalgo County, I would be willing to bet that they have a lower average income. Obviously, they have lower educational attainment levels. And they have roughly exactly our population. But yet they still have, you know, two, three billion dollars more in valuation. Right there, that right there kind of tells me that something's a little off.
And they have 19% more value with 11% of less properties.
But I will tell you something interesting about Hidalgo. They actually have a lower weekly wage than we do by like about $70. Their average weekly wage in Hidalgo is like 650 and ours is like 720. So they even have poorer wages than we do to have higher property value.
And see, Hidalgo is, it's a border county, has similar demographics. But typically in a lot of these categories, when it comes to educational attainment, when it comes to unemployment, when it comes to a lot of these factors, they perform far worse than El Paso does. I mean, El Paso, I think, is second in the state for job growth. We've had moderate growth when it comes to educational attainment, when it comes to our unemployment rate. We've seen our unemployment rate go down. But that's what I'm saying, the fact that they have fewer taxable properties and then they have more value, right there, that tells me that something's off. And by no means, I don't want this in any way to be construed as, I think the solution is, is that there should be just an automatic higher valuation on everybody. I just think that there's, I honestly don't know what the problem is. I do know that there is some discrepancies for some properties are higher and others are lower. I think we just need to identify what that, or be very aggressive, I think, as a taxing entity in holding the Central Appraisal District accountable. But just a lot of this, this is very valuable information, and thank you, Wallace, for providing that. But we've got to figure out.
How do we hold them accountable? What, I mean, what?
Well, I mean.
What are our, what's our literature? How do we?
Well, we, well, I mean, I sit on the board. And I mean, that's, you know, as the board, we approve their reappraisal plan, you know, so. And we approve, you know, the entities that they contact with to appraise property. I think, you know, we just need to ask more pointed questions about, so for example, they only reappraise property once every three years for residential. And so next year will actually be a reappraisal year where all homes will be reappraised. During the last reappraisal, property values were essentially flat. You know, I think we just got to really keep tabs with that, whether it be having Central Appraisal District make presentations to the taxing entity, such as the county or, but I think it's just for a very long time, you know, Central Appraisal Districts have kind of operated without a lot of, I guess, transparency because just, you know, it's not something that the news stations really follow or a lot of decisions follow. But there's a lot of valuation that is lost during the appeals process. And then also during the judiciary, if someone chooses to appeal, you know, here at the judicial level, you know, oftentimes, for expediency purposes, there are cases that are just, you know, the Central Appraisal District is here, the property owner is here. And oftentimes, the court will just say, just split the baby in the middle and let's just move on. You know, and then CAD's on the hook, you know, or maybe they'll come to agreements regarding the attorney fees, just like, you know, we have to deal with. But there's a lot of, I think, issues that we have to look at, whether it be appeals process and with the commercial to property valuation. But that's another thing I wanted to make clear. Wallace, if you can go back to this slide that has the percentage of residential and commercial. That's not a percentage of how much, that we're getting, 57% of our revenue from residential. Right, it's just demonstrating the breakup of the taxable properties of the 415,000. 57% of those are residential, 24% of those are commercial. And to me, that indicates, when you look at Collin County, that only has 19% commercial. You know, Travis has 23, we have 24, Bear has 25, we have 24. I mean, we're not, at least on a percentage basis, we're, you know, we're not that far off, you know, where you would think that the valuation, I think, would, you would, which would, I think, merit a much lower valuation. We seem to be on par with a lot of the other counties in terms of the distribution of both residential and commercial. So that's why I go to Commissioner Haggerty's point, I guess. The answer isn't just to raise everybody's property value. It's just there's something inherently just wrong with, I think, that's there. And I think Hidalgo County is a good example of that. So possibly, I mean, so if there could be any direction, I think as, I guess I, as a board member, go through this, providing this information and further looking into these types of issues and providing this exact type of research, I think, will be helpful in raising issues as CAD. And I think raising issues as an entity to the Central Appraisal District. Because again, I don't know of any other taxing entity that, again, there's only three entities that have countywide jurisdiction, and that would be us, Community College, and UMC. Really, Community College and UMC, it's not really within their purview to kind of take a policy look at this, to raise issues with CAD. I know the city has previously raised issues with CAD, but I'm not sure if they did so, you know, really looking at data and really providing CAD with questions that, really take a look at this and ask, you know, how could this be that we have more property or more taxable property than places like Hidalgo, but yes, less value? You know, or, you know, any sort of discrepancies. But that would be just really helpful because honestly, it's a difficult thing to research.
Yeah, and there's so many interesting things that could be contributing, such as like even development standards and like how, like lot sizes. I mean, even things like that, because like just doing some quick comparisons on the Hidalgo and El Paso, their average home price is less per square foot, but more overall value because they built bigger homes. And maybe it's, you know, it can be, so many things can be a factor into that. So they build, may have larger, require large lot sizes, that could be a factor.
Their tax rate is also higher.
Yes.
It's 57 cents.
Well, and see, that's the interesting, Wallace, if you can go back to the tax slide. The interesting point about that is that while it is higher, see, keep in mind that, I think on this list, now, keep in mind, we have the sales tax. So the sales tax generates 12 cents in revenue. So if you were to add that 12 cents that we collect in sales tax that Hidalgo County doesn't, we would be at 57 cents, and they would be at 59. The other interesting thing is that.
But is the sales tax being added to that number?
No, so this is net of sales tax. Every penny in sales tax, every, one penny in property tax brings in 3.98 million dollars. Our $48 million receipts on sales tax equates to the approximate 12 cents he's talking about. So if we didn't have a sales tax, we'd be closer to 57 cents.
And I just point that out is that, I mean, there's a correlation between the certified property value and having a high tax rate. And we would be right up there probably having the highest tax rate, you know, when you factor in sales tax as well in addition to property tax. But that, you know, that's a factor of, you know, the fact that we have to raise, you know, we have to have a higher tax rate because we have just so little to work with on the certified property value. But on Hidalgo's, you know, they provide $25,000. They may have a, they may be providing $25,000 as a homestead exemption, but then they do have a higher tax rate to kind of make up for it. So if you were to do an apples comparison of a house that's, let's say, $100,000, yeah, okay, you'll get $25,000 off during your homestead exemption compared to the 5,000 here. But I was doing the math, but it roughly works out almost equal because their tax rate is so much higher. But that's why I think the bigger priority for us, I think, is really whatever we can do as a taxing entity, and I think, again, being county, having countywide jurisdiction, we're probably in the best position to really start asking those tough questions of the Central Appraisal District as to why is this the case? Is this accurate? And really looking into it. But this is something I've been very concerned about. And I hope we can talk about it a little bit more during strategic planning as to maybe how we can go move forward. But this is something that is really plaguing El Paso. When you look at all of the 381, and this is why, I mean, it's a big deal to do about our 381 agreements and holding, you know, the property values. But we have seen a lot of growth. I mean, we can see it in our community, we can see the construction that's occurring, we can see. But the fact that it's not really translating in certified property, it's concerning.
I think it's really, the contrast is very interesting. Are there others on the board that you think would be willing to?
Well, the board, we're all going to have all new board members. They're all up in December, and so I think the taxing entities are going to pick their representatives. So we have our first meeting in January, so we'll have a better sense of the other members that sit on the board. But this is precisely the type of information that would be valuable to know that I think really the Central Appraisal District should be providing board members that we currently don't. We don't really get that sort of, you know, 30,000-foot view of these types of issues. So I'd appreciate, Wallace, like maybe perhaps there'd be other types of these types of issues that perhaps we can point to and that, you know, I can raise on the board level. Because board members really aren't made aware of these types of things. These are the types of issues that I think the board needs to be made aware of and ask tough questions.
So we'll take that as direction. Got jotted down a bunch of ideas on how to expand on this and hopefully approve it, improve it and show some, do a little more analytical correlations. And then I'm going to look, I'm going to look on the source we have from ICMA. Betsy's pointing me to a couple of good trainings on what's the right questions to ask a fire department? What's the right questions to ask a police department? I'm going to look for some real poignant questions on how do you really analyze your appraisal district and see what we can do to add value to this process. But we'll just keep this as an ongoing process, I think, and be part of the budget process we do.
And then in strategic planning, we'll see if we can find anything that we might, could be a valuable resource to help us before strategic planning.
I think the thing is, there are exceptions that we offer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for a great 2017. We've got a great 2018 up ahead. So happy holidays for everybody, all the employees that are listening. Sorry that we had, we ran a little longer than we thought, Commissioner Haggerty. But it was a good meeting nonetheless.
Oh, I knew we were.
Thank you, everybody.
This concludes today's meeting. What do we?